If you do, you can scratch your thing off. That's what we're doing. Close your eyes if you think you hit it. Shut up.
She's key rust.
Yeah. Key risk doesn't.
There's another one.
They don't operate. So they don't.
Oh, she was good.
Not the could.
Sure.
Are you ready, Becky?
Yep.
I will call this meeting of the Lincoln County Commissioners to order. We will be abiding by the Open Meetings Act as amended, a copy of which is at the entrance to this room. At 9:15, we will also be meeting as the Lincoln County Board of Equalization, again, abiding by the Open Meeting Act as amended. First item on our agenda is to open with prayer. Commissioner Wulver, would you lead us, please?
Yes. Please join me. Dear Lord, we come before you today grateful for our many blessings. We know that it takes all of us to make our community strong and healthy, and we are very blessed to have so many people working for that end result. We ask for your protections for our law enforcement, first responders, military personnel serving both at home and abroad. We are thankful for the rains that you have recently sent that keep our lands refreshed and our spirits alive. We are grateful for the privilege of serving our community. We ask that as the school year starts up, that you also send your blessings to our teachers and our students, and let the school year be a good one for them. Through your name, we ask these things. Amen.
Okay. Next item is to approve the minutes regarding Lincoln County Board of Commissioners meeting held on July 24, 2023.
Chairman, I would move to approve the minutes of the July 24 Commissioner meeting.
Second. You have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Rule call, please.
Wiens.
Aye.
Wulver.
Aye.
That was you?
Aye.
Oh, that was Joe.
Sorry.
Wiens.
Aye.
Hughley.
Wulver.
Aye.
Brunz.
Aye.
Okay. Next item on our agenda is to consider the following. First are the claims and the treasurer's receipts.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the claims and treasurer's receipts as submitted.
You have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Sorry, who made the motion?
Thank you.
No other discussion? Rule call, please.
Wulver. Aye. Hughley.
Aye.
Wiens.
Aye.
Brunz.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye. Next item on this agenda is a ways away.
Did we do the right of way?
Your Dawson permit.
Okay. Yeah. Got distracted there. Sorry. Next item on our agenda is to authorize the chairman to sign a right-of-way permit submitted by Dawson Public Power. And this is for boring under a county road on East Fort McPherson Road, boring under the county road, correct?
Correct.
And you have reviewed this, Jason?
Yep.
Okay, and you have approved.
Notice it's marked, it's in red.
Yep.
Is that okay if it goes across in red?
As long as it's under the ground, I think it's okay. We do have a check in the amount of $300. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Anything other you, anything you want to add to what has already been discussed?
I have some questions.
Please come forward, then. State your name and sign in, please.
I'm Aaron Edwards from Dawson Public Power.
Good morning, Aaron.
Good morning.
So I just have a couple of questions on how your guys' permits work, I guess. No problems on the, on the prices and stuff. One thing I would ask, we have, we work in several other counties. When we submit these, we can do it via email or online. I'd like that to be an option for us. And then to, I guess, submit payment, or like you guys send us a bill and then we pay. It's not like we're some farmer that's going anywhere anytime soon. We would like the opportunity to send, you guys send us a bill rather than me having to get a check cut, because that's a process in our office.
Can you explain that process just a little bit? Give us some insight on to why you're requesting.
So our checks are only cut on Wednesdays. In order to get something printed, a check printed on Wednesdays, I have to drive it up here on Thursday by 2:00 o'clock usually, so I get here for the next week. It would just be nice not to have to waste half of a day to bring a check up here.
I understand. Is that a possibility?
I'm not gonna bill. If Jason wants to bill, that's fine, but I got too many other things going in my office to remember to bill. I just, I don't bill anybody else.
We get billed by several other offices in this courthouse, so.
If Jason wants to bill, your family, he can't bill us fine.
And then we all, in, in other counties, the highway superintendent is also able to approve some of these simpler permits. I don't know if that would be an option here, but I'll just throw that out there. Obviously, anything that's going to be on the right-of-way.
I'll respond to, we're not other counties, number one.
No, and that's.
But, but, will I finish? But, but I enjoy seeing where they go and having that approved, because it's brought up some discussions, brought up some change in the way we do things. So I appreciate the way it's worked over the past, the way it currently works.
I do understand that entirely, but from the standpoint of your time getting us this check.
Right.
I understand that.
And, yeah, and like on this one, this is an irrigation service, and because of equipment breakdowns and stuff like that, some of our farmers are not as patient about getting electric services.
Really?
When it's not during irrigation season. So the timing is, I guess, I'm a concern sometimes, but I know that's not your guys' concern or ours, that's the customer's concern.
So it sounds like two separate issues, right?
And, and it is. It just all boils, boils into stuff that I have to deal with.
When it comes to sending a bill, I mean, I would defer that to Jason if, if him and his staff have the bandwidth to be able to handle something like that, I may be open to that. But my personal opinion, I like seeing and providing the approval on the right-of-way permits.
Yeah, and it.
Simply because.
We just deal with so many different, I think we're in many different counties, and so every process is different. So I'm going to most of the meetings trying to figure out if we can get similar processes across the districts, because like some places don't have highway superintendents, we have to go through their contracted engineers.
So would you then, is there a chance, how soon would this service be done? How soon would you?
If you issue, if you issue us that permit, it would probably be done in less than a week.
Okay. So what if payment takes over a week? Now we go back to our legal thing about services to payment.
Yeah.
Some of that.
That was gonna be where I went with that.
Yes. So my, my suggestion on that would be for other political subdivisions of the state offer us the courtesy, because we, we're going to pay our bills.
That's a question right there, because we were told, you know, you received payment before.
Right. But that's, that would be one of the differences in a, a regular customer versus a political subdivision of the state is, I mean, we're almost like a, I'm not gonna say a priority customer by any means, but we're, we're here. We're not going anywhere.
If we do this differently for Dawson, are we gonna have to do it differently for everybody?
Custer, Custer, Custer and McCook, that's why I'm, I, my, my suggestion would be for political subdivisions include.
Okay.
Give us some time to think about this.
Yeah, that's not, I'm not expecting an answer or anything. It was just, I figured this would be my, my 15 seconds to get up here, use the microphone.
But I agree with Joe that they, I wanna see them.
Nope.
I don't care who they're coming from.
I'm good with that. And I, and, you know, sending in maps and stuff like that, that's super easy.
I, I do appreciate your trying to get us to streamline it to make your time more efficiently used. So I appreciate that, Aaron.
So. Okay. Thank you.
You know, is it, is it a possibility, though, whether you come down, you just mail a check in? I mean, there's nothing since you have to necessarily be sitting there before us if we had a.
Have you mailed anything lately?
I mean.
Point well taken.
I, I, I mail stuff all the time. I work with all of our customers on getting new easements and permits and stuff like that. It's not uncommon for the mail to take 30 to 40 days. I had, I had, I had a letter come in two weeks ago. I mailed it out four and a half years ago.
I, I know a company that would get it here overnight from your office in Lexington to our courthouse.
I have a bad experience with them last week on a personal level. They broke a $1,200 sunroof for me.
It happens. That's why it's insured.
Yeah.
Ready for a motion?
I'm ready for a motion. Yes, sir.
Chairman, I would move to approve the right-of-way permit submitted by Dawson Public Power District regarding applying power under East Fort McPherson Road.
Motion and second. Any other discussion?
Authorize you to sign.
I think it's worth us looking, maybe there's something we can do as far as electronic funds. I know that the treasurer's office receives those, so taking a look at what technology's out there, that's the only thing. It's worth further discussion, though.
I agree.
Jason, I'll have you maybe kind of look into that possibility. Okay, thank you. Okay, any other discussion?
I'm gonna mitigate the need for billing.
Rule call, please.
Wiens.
Aye.
Hughley.
Aye.
Wulver.
Aye.
Brunz.
Aye.
All right.
Thanks, Aaron.
Thanks, Aaron. I don't know that you are.
Okay. Our next item is to discuss and consider pivots watering roads.
I asked for this to be put on the agenda. I had some conversation at the sheriff's office after receiving multiple phone calls, and then Commissioner Wiens and I had some discussion. He too had received some phone calls. So we thought it'd be good just to ask, invite the sheriff's office in to, to speak to the procedure.
Could I make one comment first?
Sure.
I, I had a, I've been thinking about this, and I've got a way to, it won't totally solve it, but it'll solve half of our problem. That is just to only let the diesel run, not no electric pumps.
Yep. They are.
That would cut down dramatic.
Just a thought, just throwing that out there.
Okay.
The good thing about that is the diesel pumps only run half the time, because they're dollars for life.
That's a good one.
So I'm giving you the state statute.
Thank you.
Good morning, Raleigh.
Good morning. And then there's a, I stapled to the back what another county did when they get irritated by things.
So in my conversation at your office last week, I learned a few things that I was unaware of, and I appreciated the information. So I'm just gonna let you speak to that.
Well, we, we get complaints every summer on pivots watering county roadways, state highways, which a paved surface, they're not gonna do any damage to typically. But we, we always try to get ahold of the landowner or the person that's leasing the ground and tell them to make an adjustment. If we have folks that do not want to comply with, with that, I showed you state statute, in the event that it's not a mechanical failure, or it's wind-driven, or something like that, we can, and it's been a while, but we can issue a citation to the landowner. If somebody's doing it consistently, and that, that's the person that we would really go after, but we take calls sometimes every day, sometimes several times a day on pivots watering, and, and our deputies always see it to the end. So.
And a lot of times, it's reported by the road maintenance folks. They'll come across some erosion and let us know, so.
And I think that's all we need is just consistency. I have pivots, I know how it works. But when we get a call, if we don't know the situation, we don't know if they're a chronic violator that's not doing their job, shutting off their end guns properly, or setting the adjustments properly, or somebody that's just got a neighbor that doesn't like them. And it's, we can't, we're kind of tone deaf there, we don't know what's going on.
Right.
So I just appreciate the idea that we're consistent with what you guys do, and Jason's involved. Communication's essential. I mean, we said, I send mine to Jason immediately, because I don't know if it's something where the, you know, the neighbor's just mad at him, or whether he's, this guy never makes an effort to shut his end gun off. I don't know. Some, some I do know, but I know the other side of that, too. I've got neighbors that drive around and look for end gun issues, and they're really not, you know, they're not a public hazard. So I, I appreciate both sides of this. I ju, I just wanna make sure that if the road, and Jason, this is kind of for you, but if your crews recognize chronic violations of end guns, it'd be, I think that'd be important to know that and log that and involve the sheriff's department with that. Does that make sense to you guys?
Yeah, 'cause once her name's in our system, then, then we've got it. If they're not, I mean, if, if it stayed in somebody else's system, like if they didn't report it to us and they just keeping track on their own, then we don't know.
Exactly.
I mean, we could have a 10-time offender, and we show him as one, because it's only one time we dealt with him.
And you know, it's a, you know, it's a whopping $50 fine or whatever. That's not the issue. It's, you know, I, we have cattle, you have cattle, have had cattle. End guns are no different than having cattle out on the road. If it's a chronic violation, you got some liability problems.
Right.
And if I've got an end gun that's watering a road repeatedly and don't know about it, I wanna know about it, because I wanna get it fixed. I don't wanna get sued.
Well, that's the case a lot of times, especially with absentee owners.
Exactly. Exactly. Yep. They don't know that. So communication's really key, and so maybe we do have a, maybe we refresh everybody's memory and send them a letter or.
So if you have cattle out on the road repeatedly, is that open game?
Well, it's, uh.
For fast-going cars, it is.
There's a guy in Custer County that went to jail, prison for it a number of years ago. Not only lost his place in a civil suit, he lost his freedom, because he killed an individual in the middle of the night with a bull out on the middle road.
In the middle, again.
So nobody that, no, I mean, everybody that's a landowner takes this ser, I mean, most people that own these take this very seriously. It's not the fine. It's, you don't wanna be involved in litigation. You wanna make sure you're doing your best to be a good steward, good neighbor, so.
That's about 99%.
It is. It absolutely is.
But there's, there has been times where they, either they couldn't get it fixed, or they didn't fix it. And, but that's pretty rare. They have to know about it.
Yeah, but all the more reason to have a track record and Jason communicate to you guys what's going on with, and vice versa. Because we, you know, like I said, when we get one of those, unless we drive by it in our, it's in our neighborhood, we don't necessarily know.
Yeah, some of the modern ones, I've called people up and told them, and they said, oh, you're right. They look it up on their phone and, yeah, we'll turn that off 50 feet later.
Yeah, and that's the beauty of the, you know, if you're, if you have that benefit, thank God we do now. We don't have the old antique Gifford Hills, so we can get on the phone and shut the entire system by, I don't know, the end gun. But like you said, communication's key. Just wanna communicate to everybody. Appreciate you guys staying consistent with this. We don't, we don't wanna, an individual in the community saying, well, they, they told me it wasn't their priority or their whatever, but.
I'm just glad to get mine right side up last week, so.
Yeah. Exactly.
Chief Deputy Kramer, you attached the second page. You said this is a neighboring county, and this is a letter that they send to them?
Yeah, I, I just found that, found that when I was looking at some things. It's from Hitchcock County. I think that's something put out by their commissioners when they had, they had stuff, they just put a public notice out. It talks about mowing ditches and everything on there, but it, it really was about end gun uses. And just a reminder, I don't know if they do that every spring, but I thought it'd give you something to think about.
Do you give that to all 10 for me?
All 10, yeah.
Well, very good. I appreciate you guys coming in and educating us on this, and maybe our local media will do a little bit in the paper on it to get the word out to the, to the pivot owners that we've had some conversation and that there is a procedure in place.
Yep.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Yep.
Okay. It is, it is 9:19. We will recess as Lincoln County Board of Commissioners and convene as Lincoln County Board of Equalization, again, abiding by the Open Meeting Act as amended. First item of this agenda is approve the minutes regarding Lincoln County Board of Equalization meeting held on July 24, 2023.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the Lincoln County Board of Equalization meeting minutes held on July 24, 2023.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Rule call, please.
Wulver. Aye. Wiens.
Aye.
Hughley.
Aye.
Brunz.
Epstein.
Woodruff.
Aye. Okay. Next item is correct, certificates of correction and refund as submitted by the county assessor. Good morning, Hughley.
Good morning.
Looks like you have a little set of four here for me.
I do. Yep. Julie Stinger, Lincoln County Assessor. This is actually on two parcels that we need to correct going back to 2021. During the protest procedure, we kind of became aware of this problem. This is a section of ground that is, got a fence line on it that isn't actually the actual boundary line, that, you know, doesn't follow the section line. So there is a property structure, house, I guess, that he lives in, that is located on the north side of the fence, but on the south side of the section line. So when we did our aerial review of our rural properties in 2021, we seen this, and we moved that house to the other, to the actual section where it sits, to that property owner. We'll come to find out, he is not the owner. It's the gentleman to the north owns the buildings. Because of the fence, they have, they're, they kind of got some surveys talking about boundary line agreements, and they're not sure how they're gonna handle the, the land part of it. But for the building part of it, we went ahead and put the buildings on, you know, the I O L L card stating that the one gentleman owns the buildings, but he doesn't own the land. So we're going back and doing the corrections for 21 and 22. So the gentleman that actually owns the buildings will pay the taxes on the buildings for 21 and 22.
And that gentleman is Mr. Cortez?
Yes.
From Maxwell?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, so he'll pay the taxes on those for 21 and 22. We'll give the Matera Ranch a refund then on those, just the building values for 21 and 22. And then you will have, coming up next, be a county board change, we'll fix the 2023 values. We haven't done the tax statements yet, so, so they won't be taxless corrections in the book, but there will be county board changes on those.
For those of you that may not be here, we, we also had a little fence line survey, didn't we? We had relit her, so.
Yeah.
It was nice to be able to get the actual property lines, get it correct.
And that didn't really surface until the protest was brought up.
Protest, right, yeah.
So that was, that was very fortunate that we could get this streamed out.
Yep.
Now, I have three, three here for Matera Ranch LLC.
There should be two taxless corrections for Matera and two for Mr. Cortez.
Let me see if that, you're exactly right.
Okay. Is that all done on one motion?
I believe you can do the taxless corrections on one motion, yeah.
Okay. What I have here is the, you know, as Julie has mentioned, this is the separation of the buildings from the land. Two for Matera Ranch are exactly right, and then two for Mr. Cortez. Colleagues?
You ready? Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the certificates of correction and refund as submitted by the county assessor.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Rule call, please.
Wulver. Aye. Brunz.
Aye.
Hughley.
Aye.
Wiens.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye. Okay. Next on our.
Oh, that's the next one.
Okay. Next item on our agenda is property valuation changes as submitted by the county assessor.
Yep, they will be in regards to the same two properties, and it's just correcting the 2023 values.
And what this says is the land is valued for Matera Ranch at $428,873, and then the buildings, the improvements for Mr. Cortez comes to $16,306.
Correct.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion, we approve the property valuation changes as submitted by the Lincoln County Assessor.
And these are for parcel 65720 and 65720.02.
Thank you.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Rule call, please.
Hughley. Wulver. Aye. Wiens.
Aye.
Brunz.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye. Okay. Okay. Our next item on this agenda is offering a confession of judgment regarding the case of First National Bank of Omaha appellate versus Lincoln County Board of Equalization appellate, case number 22C-0528, which is before the Nebraska Tax Equalization Review Commission, in which the Lincoln County Board of Equalization would confess that the value of the real estate in the aforementioned case should be $864,674 for cashier 2022. Let the birds quit chirping, and then Tyler, would you like to weigh in on this?
This is our chance to get out of one of the pending TERC cases we have coming up in September by agreeing with the taxpayer about what the valuation of the property should be. This is the, if I'm not mistaken, First National Bank building down south. The assessor's office and their representatives worked together, found a valuation that is completely supported by the law and the facts, and now the Board of Equalization has to give their consent for us to offer to confess judgment, which is basically saying, we will quit for this valuation.
Yes. Assessor's office is in agreement on this value of $864,674. in agreement on this value of $864,674.
Yep, yes, we are.
They're the ones making me do it.
Glad to see that they're on your case.
So in this case, First National Bank has already accepted this confession of judgment. So once the Board of Equalization signs off on it, we will send it over to Turk, and this case will be concluded.
Perfect. Colleagues?
Chairman, I would move to approve the offering of confession of judgment regarding the case of First National Bank of Omaha appellate versus Lincoln County Board of Equalization appellate. Case number 22C-0528, which was before the Nebraska Tax Equalization Review Commission, in which Board of Equalization will agree to confess to the value of the real estate in the case should be $864,674 for the tax year 2022. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Weems?
Aye.
Brunz?
Aye.
Hughley?
Aye.
Wulver?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other business to come before the Lincoln County Board of Equalization? If there are none, we will adjourn as the Lincoln County Board of Equalization at 9:28 and reconvene as the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners. Okay, our next item on this agenda is to discuss and consider replat of property to be used for construction of a storage building for Region 51 Emergency Management and other county offices. Morning.
Morning. Brandon Myers, Director, Region 51 Emergency Management. So doing research on the lot, 1621 West Tenth, where we talked about putting the storage unit. Judy Clark got ahold of me, said that's still plotted as five lots, not one. GIS map shows it's one lot, so we did some more digging. It's actually still listed with Register of Deeds as five lots. Never got changed over to one lot. So we need to start the process getting that changed over to one lot.
And are there any reasons why we should not make that one?
I was told it should have been done before the dive team building was put on there.
Do we know if any action was taken prior to that, and it just hasn't been completed?
Judy had conversation with both Brandon and I that in their records, they cannot find any notes or record of it being discussed before the dive team building was built. And so her suggestion was that we make this right before we move forward with the emergency management building, and we agree.
Tyler, do you have anything to add or subtract from that? Perfect. That's just what I like to hear from you, sir. Okay, so is this, what is the process to get this accomplished?
I'm gonna have to have a surveyor put out on there. So I don't know how you guys want to go about seeing if our surveyor can do it, or if we have to hire that out. I don't know about what deeds and we need to change anything there. So there's some groundwork that needs to be done before we can even submit paperwork to the city to have them look at changing it to one lot.
Okay. All right, final talk. Having looked at the replat application, it's a little more extensive than I actually expected it to be. The county, someone from the county board probably want to get in contact with Bonnie, the county surveyor. They're gonna have her shoot it, because we're gonna need a new legal description for one lot instead of five. And then she can help provide that for the application process. Really what Brandon needs is the approval of the board, and then to authorize the chairman to sign this thing once it's complete. Beyond that, it's, it's just gathering some information so that city planning and zoning, which is also run by county planning and zoning lady, can take a look at this and then get it in front of their people for approval. Just like we would.
I would imagine it has to go through their plan and commission and city council.
So we need to give you, this board needs to give you permission to contact Bonnie Edwards?
Start the process.
Start the process, correct?
Yes.
Colleagues?
Chairman, I would move to approve the process to replat property being used for construction, storage building, Region 51 Emergency Management, otherwise known as 1620.
1621 West Tenth.
1621 West Tenth, here in North Platte. And to contact surveying and all the other appropriate agencies to fill the application. To complete the application.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Once that's, application's done, then it'll come back before the board for another agenda item for us to discuss having and consider you signing the application.
And did you state it, Commissioner, that was not contact Bonnie?
I authorized Brandon to do it. We just.
Oh, yeah, sorry, okay.
Brandon didn't care about it.
Is that okay with you, sir?
Yes, that's fine.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Weems?
Aye.
Brunz?
Aye.
Hughley?
Aye.
Wulver?
Aye.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
To give Brandon permission to contact Bonnie Edwards about starting the survey and getting the application filled out.
Okay, our next agenda item is a present, presentation by Region 2 Services. Kylie Joyce, Executive Director.
That would be you? That's me, and this is Jen Edman. She is with North Platte Opportunity Center. She's the event coordinator there.
Okay, would you ladies please sign in for us, please?
And I have some handouts. It looks like you need more paper.
Yeah, we do.
Kylie, since this is your first time, I'll let you know. Usually when Region 2 does this, they bring coffee in a roll, so next time you'll have to remember.
I want goodies. The county money was not used.
Very good.
Next time I can bring some of that coffee and goodies.
That gets you on our first visit.
Yes.
You wanna just take one out of there and pass it around? That might be the easiest way to do that.
Got some Narcan in here?
No, I don't. Just peppermint. It is a Monday. I should have maybe put some caffeine in there, but. So we are out just to share about our program and what we do. I just say thank you for the county funds that the programs receive to operate. And to share a little bit about that and hopefully answer any questions you have. I'm gonna go.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I'm gonna go over numbers, and then Jen's gonna share about what the North Platte Opportunity Center does, because they do a lot of cool things here in the community and in the surrounding areas that they serve. Our mission is to serve folks with intellectual and developmental disabilities. We're the DD side of things. There's also behavioral health and aging, but we are just primarily DD. And we want folks to live lives just like you and I do, in their communities, to live in the places that they choose to live, to have opportunities, to have jobs, if that's what they so choose, and just to have good and fulfilling lives. So that is our mission and our goal through all of our programs. We serve 17 counties in Region 2. North Platte Opportunity Center is our largest program. And currently, we serve 163 individuals through a variety of funding sources, but majority of that is developmental disabilities waiver money that comes from state and federal funds. And then we serve some folks through private pay, aged and disabled waiver. And then we work with Voc Rehab with the Nebraska Department of Ed. So those are how we serve those 163 individuals. We are certified through the state of Nebraska. We go through a certification process where they come out and review our programs and make sure that we're doing all the things that we promised we would do for those folks and following the regulations and policies with anything that's government work. That's how that goes. We have area agencies, as I mentioned, here in North Platte. In COSAD, we have South Central Developmental Services. In McCook, we have South with Training Services. And then PAX and Ogallala. So we have four programs. They offer a variety of different services. All of them offer day services where folks go for vocational training skills. They'll do volunteering in the community and do community inclusion type activities. We also have residential sites with group homes that are 24/7 or shared living providers that are 24/7. We have drop-in services in residences where they either live with their family, or they might have their own home or apartment. And then we also do respite care services for caregivers to give them a break. We are comprised of one county commissioner for our governing board, and we are lucky to have Joe join us. And that was set up back in the 70s through an interlocal agreement that they would meet and kind of oversee our services. I know they did that for behavioral health and aging as well. And then Region 2 is the umbrella over the agencies, and we are a political subdivision. We receive federal, county, local, and state funds to operate. The county funds go directly to the provider agencies, so they can use those in the services that they do. The next page in your packet is just the, the map of the counties, which I'm pretty sure I don't need to tell you about your sister counties. I just heard you talking about Hitchcock, so I won't go over that map. But in case you needed a reference, the next page is the county distribution. So looking at Lincoln County, people originated from. And so there are 50 individuals from Lincoln County that are receiving services in the North Platte program, one in the Ogallala program, and six in the COSAD program. So a total of 57 individuals from Lincoln County that are in our services. Any questions on that? All right, the next page is demographic information, just looking at the age distribution throughout the region. The majority of folks are 41 to 65 years of age. You don't see very many in that 0 to 21, and that's, there's a couple reasons for that. We have the ability to serve children, but our residential programs aren't set up to serve children. They're more for adult. And entitlement in Nebraska is age 21. So you don't actually qualify for a service until 21 years of age unless you have some circumstances that make you qualify as a child. And we also have had someone that is 92 years old in our services, and they came in in the 70s. So it's a pretty big span. We can serve kiddos, and we have in the past. And we serve them as they age through life to the age of 92 so far, so. Service distribution, these are just the services broke down demographically. 132 individuals are in that day service that I shared about. 34 individuals have supported employment services. That's where they just have someone that checks in with them at their job to make sure that they do well. That is not the only folks that are employed. Those are just the folks that need that support. 74 individuals live in those 24/7 residential homes or shared living provider settings. And then 54 individuals are in that drop-in service for residential where staff come and go, and they might have their own apartment or home, or live with their folks. And then there's 15 individuals with respite services. The next page is a pie chart, because everybody loves a good pie chart. And it's just talking about how our revenue is and how we're funded. So as you can see, we received 14.8 this past fiscal year for our services to provide the services we do. The majority of that, like I mentioned, is for, from DD waiver funds, which is 13.5 million, the largest part of the pie. And then you can see the other distributions where we receive funds to operate. And you can see the county money there. We have board and room, but then that's paid back out with utilities and groceries. And if anyone is seeing grocery costs, that's high this year. There are some subcontracts that agencies do with shared living providers, but then that's paid back out to the, the folks that provide those services. Any questions on that pie chart?
That largest share of that comes from DD?
Developmental Disabilities waiver money.
That's federal money?
It's state money with a federal match, yep.
So it looks like the county contribution to that is just 1.3%?
Yes, yep, about 198,000 last year.
And that's coming from all 17 counties?
All 17 counties.
All 17 counties.
And that is split per capita?
Per capita, yep. And that's voted on by the governing board.
So Region 2 is a state agency?
No, not necessarily. We're a political subdivision. So the way that the state set it back, set it up in the 70s was for the different regions to be in charge of these different departments. And we are the DD part, there's behavioral health and aging.
Okay, thank you for that explanation.
And they haven't updated that since the 70s. I don't know if they will or not, so.
Does it work pretty good, the way it's set up?
Yeah, and each region does it differently. We do it a certain way. We're similar to Region 1. But if you get down to the more metropolitan areas, they do it a little different than we do.
More than sufficient than we are, although they should be far more efficient.
Yeah, you would think.
So getting some of those state funds, is there a lot of hooks and red tape that you have to buy by from DHHS?
Oh, yes, yes. And that's part of that certification process. And then we have what they call individual support plans for every person we serve. And it's like a contract between us and the state of what we're gonna do for those individuals. So if they have goals that they want to reach, we are accountable to make sure those happen. So it's, there's a lot of red tape, but it's, it's worth it, so.
Super.
All right, county money history, just to break it down for you. So you can see Lincoln County, it just talks about what it was for this past fiscal year. It was based off the 2020 census. So you actually had a decrease in your census, so the contribution went down even though they, the governing board raised it per capita. So that's just what that is. And you can see your other counties, the other 17, what they contribute. Lincoln County is the largest, but you also have the largest amount of individuals that originate from Lincoln County. So the last page that I'm gonna present on is just a breakdown of what it actually would cost for services. This is something the governing board asked me to do. So if we're looking at the 57 folks that are from Lincoln County, 50 of those here in North Platte, six in South, at South Central and COSAD, and one at PAX and Ogallala, the costs for those services are determined on a state assessment that has been in place for quite some times. It, it looks at their needs, what their level of care is, to determine what the cost of those services were. And that is for a day service, a residential service if they qualify, and the transportation piece. So just the cost of services for those 57 individuals from Lincoln County for a year is $6.7 million. And so, you know, depending on how long they're in programs, you have folks that are in programs till they're 92. It could be several years that, if they started in the 70s. But those funds, their needs change over time, and so those assessments are redone. So I just wanted to talk about how that works. So the state breaks that down into tiers. So one, someone with a Level 1 funding need would be a lot of care, probably with mobility issues and a lot of personal care needs, would live in a 24/7 group home. And that Level 1 funding would start at $292,000. And then you go to Level 7 to Level 10, which can be $22,000 to $55,000 to serve and meet those folks' needs. So it just, it runs the gamut of what it can be. It just depends on their needs. And so the folks that are served here, this is what it would be per year to serve them. And then just talking about county funds again, for the fiscal year last year, Lincoln County contributed $70,392 towards the services that we are providing for individuals in the region. And we are so appreciative of that. That is utilized as part of a balanced budget. The agencies are nonprofits, so it's basically, we're just trying to stay open and pay our staff and provide good services. So it's not anything that they're making money on. We're just trying to stay open and solvent. And part of the county funds that is nice that we receive those is because they can be used for non-allowable expenses at the state because of red tape won't let you use for certain things. And that goes to stash staff incentives, like if you want to do bonuses or gas cards or a Christmas party for them, you cannot use DD waiver money for that, but you could use county funds for that. In this past fiscal year, though, the majority of, actually all of the county funds were spent on things that helped the provider agencies stay within budget. And the biggest one of those was 188,000 went to staff wages and overtime. It's an industry, just like a lot of others, that have a lot of vacancies because of the competitiveness with needing staff for a lot of different, different places. And then transportation cost, if a bus needed a new windshield or a van needed tires, the money was used for that. And like I mentioned, the increased cost of groceries, those board costs went up. If anyone's went to the store to buy anything, you'd know that too. So that's my part of the presentation, just a big thank you for your contribution and county funds for the programs, for North Platte Opportunity Center especially, since they serve the majority of folks from Lincoln County. So I'll turn it over to Jen so she can share about services, and that's on the last page of the packet.
Oh, yeah, would you state your name again? I forgot.
Jennifer Edman. I'm an event coordinator at the North Platte Opportunity Center. So Kylie was able to share with you numbers and how that impacts the individuals that we serve. And I'm here, I kind of want to tell you a little bit about what we do with some of those funds and how we enrich the lives of those that we serve. As you can see here throughout the documentation, we do a lot of great things. Our individuals are involved with the Special Olympics swim team, bocce ball. Of course, that takes extra staffing. That takes travel time, practice time, all of that sort of thing. But they, what the important, importance that comes out of this is the smiles that we get. They are able to be involved with their community. They're able to interact, and it brings pride to them.
They're able to interact, and it brings pride to them as they're doing these things. We have several small businesses where they are also learning different skills. They're getting to create things. The pride that they have as they sell at different craft fairs or out of our hidden treasure store is amazing. You can see some examples there, some door hangers that they've created. One of their biggest accomplishments this last year was out at the Christmas, at Cody Park for the Christmas time when they put the houses out there. Our individuals and staff created a Whoville House on opening night for that when they turned on all the lights, the smiles. You would not believe the smiles from our individuals. And they were immersed in the community as the community came out to celebrate that. And that's, that's our biggest goal, is to provide them with a life that is with the rest of the community. So those are really, really big deals. As you can see, we've got some staff celebrations down there at the bottom. We've got some staff that have contributed to our agency for thirty-plus years. And that will tell you right there what a great place this is to work for and to be able to work with the individuals, see their smiles, see their growth, find out what goals they have in life, and to be able to help them accomplish those goals. On the back page there, you're going to see that we like to take vacations. And again, that requires money too. I was fortunate enough last year to be able to go to a Cornhusker game with the individuals. Many of them had never, ever been to experience any of that. At that same time, we went to an apple orchard. Just the sheer joy, most of us wouldn't even think about going to an apple orchard, picking apples. These folks have not had that opportunity, and we're providing that for them. So again, smiles, that's what it's about. Smiles and growth and the opportunity to do what everybody else is doing. Our individuals give back to their community as well. They do Meals on Wheels four days a week. They actually have two routes. And so they get to go walk up and knock on somebody's door to be able to provide their meal for the, mostly the aging community, but for those who can't get out of their home. So that, again, provides another opportunity for them to interact. We do have several that are actually working through the supported employment. There's a list there that you can see of the different businesses in town who work with us on that. And that's, and I've had the opportunity to go in and support while the individuals are working. Again, the self-fulfillment that they have, the pride of knowing that they have a job just like other people in the community, that is a really big piece of their day. And it makes them very, very proud. You can see some different growth that we've had since two thousand eighteen on items that we've created. The new opportunity thrift store kind of got a facelift. We're pretty well-known as far as thrift stores in town. We're up there on Front Street. We have several customers that come in just to see our individuals. There's that community interaction there as well. We have an individual who likes to sing for them. And some of them will just come in just to hear him sing that day. So that, that's a great time for them to know that we exist. And that's an important piece too, is that the community knows that we exist out there. We recently opened last summer, or two summers ago, actually, the Transition Center. And this is, they self-titled themselves the Retirement Club. They're of an age where we're not teaching skills to go out to get a job. They actually are retired. They have their recliners and their TVs, and they knit, and they play bingo, and they do all of those types of things. But they get to go out and do other things, experience things too, like late day, all of that. They get to go out and experience that. So that's, that's a great thing for them. And our latest accomplishment is we just opened a sensory site. It was in one of our buildings that we previously owned, the one that we do our woodworking shop out of. But we converted part of it into a complete sensory room. So individuals can go over there if they're needing a break from their day, they're just needing something else that they would like to go do, and that could be painting, working on planting flowers, just all types of sensory integration. And that's been very, very helpful. Sometimes during all of our days, we have those stressful moments. Well, now we have an outlet for them to be able to go to and handle their stress in a better way and then be able to go back to working on those skills. That includes the community integration and working on future employment. So I got to talk about the fund stuff. Kylie had the. Kylie had the numbers. But I just want to make sure that everybody here knows that the services that we provide for them, not only in education, but also living life, living life that they should so that they can have the opportunity to go out there and enjoy it.
I would imagine that not only do the people that serve, you serve at the Opportunity Center benefit, but the whole family. It's very important that they, you know, have this service. So thank you for doing that.
Yes.
No, I can't say enough about both these ladies. Kylie is, is just, has been on the job not very long as our executive director. But if you noticed, when she was rattling off those numbers, she wasn't reading those. She's got a lot of years of experience coming from the bottom up and knows this thing inside out. And we're so fortunate to have them. Jen, when you go over and see their interaction with those kids or see them at the rodeo or anything else, you, you want to get your heart warmed up someday. No better way. Thank you, ladies.
Now, thank you for you, what you do to help contribute to the community.
Well, and thank you. We're very appreciative for the county money and your support, so.
Thank you for the update. Appreciate it.
And, and the goodies, that's not worth over thirty, thirty-five dollars, is it?
As I said, county funds were not used.
Oh, okay.
I'll remember Donna's coffiness. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next item on our agenda is Lincoln County Assessor Julie Stinger to present the three-year plan of assessment.
Good morning again.
Good morning again. And you have a company month.
I do. Julie Stinger, Lincoln County Assessor.
Charity Farley, Lead Lincoln County Appraiser.
I thought I recognized you from a couple weeks ago, yeah. I thought I did.
We've had a lot of quality time together lately.
This is just our yearly update of the three-year plan that we're required to present in front of you to let you know kind of where we're headed. You know by state statute, we are required to physically review and inspect all the properties within the county at least once every six years. So, and we have our county set up now on a pretty good six-year cycle. So this is just giving you what the next three years plan are within that cycle anyway, so. I think you've all had a copy put in your packets. I guess, do you want us to just give us a brief overview?
Please.
Do you have questions? Okay. I might kind of let Charity start. I'm, I kind of do the ag stuff, but other than that, she kind of plans everything else out for the, the office and the assessment part.
So our six-year review cycle restarted for two thousand twenty-three. So the north side was done for two thousand twenty-three. And so were the lake properties. For two thousand twenty-four, we will be doing all of the south side of North Platte. That includes south of the interstate as well. We will do a full physical drive-by appraisal. We, if we need to get out and knock on doors, we will, but it won't be for every single property.
Dividing line, north-south?
The railroad.
Railroad.
And then for two thousand twenty-five, we will be doing all of the villages at the same time that we do the residential. We'll also do the commercial in those villages. So we'll be doing both of those. Commercial property is a little different. They're harder to do, just drive-by appraisals on those ones we used to go and speak to the individuals who either own the property or leasing the property, so. For two thousand twenty-six, that's when we'll start our suburban and rural residential review, as well as the improved ag parcels. It took us two years last time we did it. It may require that again this year, or this time. We would prefer not to, but if it needs it, we need to. It's a lot of parcels, it's a lot of driving, it's a lot of time that it takes us to do that. So Lincoln County is not a small county, so it's time-consuming. And then our final year that we're going to be doing in two thousand twenty-seven or twenty-eight, depending upon how long that rural review takes, that's when we'll do the commercial inside North Platte.
Okay. And like Charity spoke to the fact, we will be doing the rural residential and improved ag parcels in the two thousand twenty-six, hopefully within the one year when she does the suburban and rural residential review. Throughout the, the rest of the time, I monitor the egg sales, unimproved egg sales, and the egg sales that have improvement value less than five percent of the overall value. Those are also looked at as an unimproved egg sale. And I continue to set the egg values every year based on that three-year sales ratio study. So those will be looked at. And during the time when the, my appraisal staff for the appraisers that route the property record cards, when they do their rural review, we, they look at the aerial imagery. And we have updated aerial imagery for two thousand twenty-two. I think it was taken in July of two thousand twenty-two. So state statute was passed quite a few years ago that to be in compliance with that six-year review and inspection cycle, you are able to look at, update it. As long as it's been two years, you can look at the aerial imagery. And we do update that now every two years, so. So when the girls are routing these rural residential, suburban residential, they're looking at this aerial imagery when they find these parcels. So they are looking, if it's an unimproved parcel, but now they see in the aerial imagery that there's a structure there of some kind, then they will pull that property record card and route that so the appraisers can go out and look at that property and pick up, maybe it's a new grain bin or a new utility building, something that we were unaware that was there. So, so we do inspect all that unimproved imagery as well, looking for new improvements.
Is that imagery real-time or is it updated so many months or a year out, or?
It's, like I said, we update it every two years. It's the FSA imagery when they fly, and they fly every two years.
So it's a two-year historic picture?
Yep.
So it's the same as if you get on Google Earth and look at a picture of a property that, that, that may be two, three, four years old?
It could be, yes. At the most, like I said, two years usually.
At the most, okay.
Because we do, we have been, you know, our cam, or not, our G, GIS vendors have been getting that imagery and providing it every two years is what we're paying for now. Yeah. So, so, so that's what we will be doing with the ag. Like I said, we, we look at all those unimproved ones with that aerial imagery to, to meet that six-year review and inspection policy there. And I do look at the sales every year, which we continue to on all of the properties, residential, commercial, whether we're actually there for that physical review and inspection. You know, obviously, you guys learned this year that if we're out of compliance based on what's going on with the sales, then we have to kind of do that overall blanket increase because we're not actually due to be there for that physical review. And, you know, we don't have enough time and staff to get there. You know, we've got to stay on our plan, so. So we do monitor sales all throughout this three-year period, whether we're there doing the physical review and inspection or not. Recreational, I think we're going to do a new study on it in, I think you have two thousand twenty-seven, possibly? Twenty-six? Okay, yeah. So will we look at those recreational sales? We don't have as many anymore as we did there for a while, but they still are, in my opinion, selling at a very strong market basis.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Great.
Any other questions that you guys might have for us?
What's the process if you discover a building on an ag parcel that wasn't reported? You just add it and it starts from there? You don't go back and try to figure out when it was added?
We usually don't. I mean, the aerial imagery now, usually they're not too far behind. We can pick, catch them pretty quick. I think we can go back as far as three years if, if we want to. You know, and that, I guess, in my opinion, that's a little bit of the frustration is the, planning and zoning, if it's an ag building, they are not required to go in front of them to get a building permit. So that stuff can, I mean, you know, the people aren't doing anything wrong. There's a form out there. Judy will tell them to fill it out. If they come into her thinking they need a permit, that they can fill out for the assessor's office, but there's not a requirement for a building permit through them. So, so we do miss some of that stuff, but we, we are trying to very diligently now watch that aerial imagery now to pick up that stuff.
Julie, with the technology today and with this being on a consistent program now, I would think, I would think it would be relatively easy to have a software that says, here was the last image two years ago. Here's the image now. Whoops, this thing changed in red, new building here, rather than going through it. There's got to be a way to do that.
We actually discussed about a year ago, a software program like that. But it was, it was fairly pricey. Because we were talking about using some more CARES Act to prevent the assessors from having to.
And I know a lot of counties have done that, use the ARPA funds. But, you know, we discussed, I think they also try to get their, maybe the city to go in with them, their nine-one-one offices would, you know, benefit from them. The sheriff's office, you know, any of your, you know, the police forces and stuff. They said, use that because the imagery is so close to, they can really.
Three sixty.
Three sixty. And then they can zoom in. You can find, you know, a gate or if you needed to surround the building, they have, they can see whatever they need to see, so.
But I mean, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be something we would manually do.
No.
It would be something that would be picked up automatically.
Yeah, they overlay it, and then, you know, then I think they provide you the listing.
But I thought that was something that it, that it company was going to do. So they actually went out and did that for us. That's what I thought. But I, what I'm talking is just a software that doesn't have somebody do that for us that just automatically does that.
Well, the GIS does not have that capability, or GIS does not.
Eagle, Eagle View does.
Eagle View, or what used to be called pictometry, does have that capability of taking your old imagery and putting the new on it, and then it will highlight those spots, like if there's a new deck on somebody's house or something of that nature. But GIS does not have that capability.
Thank you.
And pictometry was the software that we were looking at.
Right, it's called, it's called Eagle View now, but yeah, it was pictometry, same thing.
And they had a fairly, a fairly expensive upfront cost, and then there was a subscription.
I remember that.
We had to continue to pay. It just didn't make financial sense.
But it did hit our radar from the standpoint during the COVID years. It was nice, it would have been nice not to have our young folks on those, some of those sites. It would have certainly been advantageous. Maybe it's something we need to revisit again.
It's definitely something that would be beneficial for numerous reasons. I mean, there's obviously individuals who don't want you to go on their property and measure anything. So then you have to estimate it from an alley or a road or what have you. And so that, that right there, you can measure anything on those properties using that Eagle View. And we would love to have it.
I would, I would like to see that one more time, just to have that.
I know there are more and more counties going that direction because G-Works has really fell by the wayside this last year. There's a lot of unhappy counties that are leaving. So I know that Eagle View and pictometry is being picked up by a lot of the bigger counties. But I, like I said, I do believe they are trying to get other entities on board. So it's a cost-share program because it is, you know, fairly expensive to measure.
I think I would be interested in exploring that again.
I know he'd love to come out and give another presentation because he's always kind of touching base with me since we, you know, had him come out a year, year and a half ago.
And if it improves the accuracy and the efficiency and the safety, it sounds like there's a lot of benefit to it, so.
I'd want to weigh that against the cost, but please look into that.
Get some set up this fall for that. Appreciate it.
Anything else? Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, our next agenda item is to discuss and consider twenty twenty-three business insurance renewal, property liability workers compensation. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, everybody.
This was an item that we had put off for a few weeks so we could have a little more time to digest and explore.
To digest the risk, yep. So Tanner Patera, Hub International, thirty-eight twenty-one, Sugar River Court.
And I believe last day of July today is the day we have to get something done, correct?
Yeah, we have to, well, I mean, technically, yes. So the policy, EMC automatically renews, so coverage will start tomorrow. So we wanted to delay it a little more we can because EMC does not charge any minimum earned premium. So technically, they will prorate to the day. So if we have a discussion and we need to follow up on anything, we have a few, I mean, a week or so to work it out. So, I mean, so, I mean, ideally, yes, would it be great if we had a decision today, but if we don't, we don't, we'll work through it.
Okay.
So just a quick recap to follow up on, last time we discussed, I mean, the renewal and Travelers versus EMC. Travelers has a very competitive bid, but they have a 2% wind hail deductible that is applied, which we, like we've discussed before, is you can buy insurance to fill the gap. I mean, it's kind of a stop, a gap insurance type deal. So the, I finalized wind hail buy down quotes. Right now, currently, we have a $25,000 wind hail buy down on pro, or wind hail, no, excuse me, wind hail deductible on property. Okay, so we have, I think, five or 10,000. Yep, and then we have 25,000 for wind hail because it saved us, I mean, gosh, it was like 20 grand last year between the couple changes we made. So the buy down policy is due to the market conditions and storms everywhere. I just got a report, last year we had 15 one-day billion-dollar weather events. Through June this year, we've had 12 in the United States. So the market conditions for property are going to continue to struggle, which is leading into the wind hail buy down. We used to be able to get down to 25,000, but the most you can buy down the wind hail now to is with this, when you get over 50 million insured property is 50,000. So if we did the buy down policy at 50,000, that policy is 116,000, which is included, if you look at the back of the summary, it's 116,000 for that to get the deductible down to 1%, or to 50,000. We can go to a 1% wind hail. So currently, if you look at the percentage wind hail, so total insured value for the county is 60, just over 60 million. All of it, I mean, that's the entire county. I would, I looked at the figures and in North Flatt is our biggest exposure between the courthouse and the jail, so we've got about 45 to 50 million of that here in town. So if we're looking at a catastrophe, right, we would have to have, like, knock on everything we have, we'd have to have like a Joplin happen and scrape North Flatt. I mean, to do the type of damage that would impact the county. So at that point, if we've got 50 million in insured value in town and it's all gone, you have a million dollar, yeah, a million dollar hail deductible to absorb at that point because it's based on total insured value of the damaged property with a minimum of, I believe, 250,000, or 250,000 is the minimum. So if we have a random hailstorm and it's to a smaller building, the minimum we have is 250,000. So we're self-insuring to, if we don't buy the wind hail down, the wind hail buy down, you're, I mean, we're self-insuring hail, basically.
Tanner, let me, let me ask right now because I, I'll forget it later. Those are total replacement costs of our property, okay?
Correct.
We're not going to have the brick, we're not going to have everything on the courthouse destroyed, we're going to have a roof, maybe some windows. Same thing with the jail. We don't have fiberglass siding, we don't have, you know, it's not a home, it's a different animal. Our building out there is a block, our building there is a block, brick.
Very, very hail resistant.
Very hail resistant. So having said that, if we want to save some money, in my way of thinking, we need to think real hard about the amount that we decide to insure for that property. We're going to have, like I say, we're going to have damage to roofs.
Yep.
And we're, and in most of our cases, or in some of our cases, we have a heavy ballasted roof now. We have a couple buildings that, that have, you know, like a TRO Cal or something other that's non-ballasted, but most of our roofs are ballasted roofs. Therefore, we're not, as you know, not a lot of hail damage because it hits the rocks and breaks the hill up.
The only exposure you have on roofs anymore is HVAC units and most of them are built to, I mean, there's already a cosmetic hail exclusion on all policies, so if you have some dents in the metal, nobody, nobody worries about those. I did also quote, instead of down to 50,000, instead of having 2%, I just did a 1% wind hail buy down, and that is 57,000 versus 116,000. So if you look at my bottom numbers, the totals, so EMC to renew as is is 640. Travelers with the 50,000, I mean, the buy down with 116,000 is 693. If we go and we don't have any wind hail buy down.
You meant 740.
Yeah, 740 for EMC.
Right.
Yep, sorry. Sorry, yeah, sorry.
I was going to say, let's go with EMC.
I got six.
I was going to say.
I like, I like, I know, that's one of the better. So yeah. Yep, so EMC 740. If we try to do Travelers with the buy down to 50,000, we're at 695-ish, we'll just say that. If we don't do any wind hail buy down, you're at 575 in that range. And if we did the 1% buy down, you're at 633. I like that. So, I mean, the, the only thing like we talked about last time, I mean, EMC is a longstanding account. I think you guys have been, county's been with EMC, I think, since the 50s. I mean, it's probably one of the longest accounts they have. They don't want to lose the account, but they also, you've outgrown EMC's ability with municipalities because you're larger than what they like to see. Travelers does large municipalities, much larger than Lincoln, Lincoln County, they know what they're doing. So, and, I mean, EMC, I had a call with their loss control about a few other larger accounts with them. EMC would like to do more. I honestly think Travelers, with their experience in counties and jails, could be more beneficial as a partner. I mean, like what Hub is doing, we're trying to benefit and improve our safety program. Travelers is super proactive about that. And, I mean, Sean, that was out and met with Raleigh and Jerome, I mean, he, he would come out quarterly also on top of it just to help improve safety, so.
So EMC doesn't want to lose our account, but eventually the day is going to come. And I, I say it's sooner rather than later where they say, you know what, we really don't have the.
The only reason, honestly, like we talked about last time, the reason why they are writing the county account is they make very good margin because the only claims you guys ever have are work comp claims. And even if you look at the loss, you look at the loss ratio, it's a very profitable account. So that's why they're still doing it. I mean, like I said, the only other thing that we discussed is, we're in that, the county's the in-betweener, right? We're not big enough to go self-insured, we're not small enough to get more to do it. So if we leave EMC, there's no going back to EMC because they're just out of that realm. So we'd lose a market. I mean, if, if, in my opinion, if you have to make a decision, if we're going to, depending on the financial situation in the county and what you have in reserves, I mean, you do no wind hail or the 1%. I mean, if we're going to do it.
Man, I'm less, less concerned about maintaining a player in the market as an option that eventually is going to go away.
They're going to go away versus saving over 100,000.
By saving the taxpayers' money.
Yeah, you're going to save over 100,000 if we go with.
Travelers.
With the Travelers, yes.
With the 1%.
With the 1%, I mean, you can save a over, what's that, 115?
About 150.
150 plus. This is, I mean, the Travelers numbers are going to slightly change because there's been vehicle changes and stuff like that, but Travelers is going to be very close to where we're at now, so.
Tanner, a question I have for you.
Sure.
When you talk about wind and hail.
Yes.
And you mentioned Joplin, wind would include a tornado?
Correct.
Okay, good.
Wind hail. So, but I mean, the other deductible is, I mean, for water losses, fire, I mean, all the other things you can think of. The wind hail is just what, I did have EMC quote a 2% wind hail deductible and it only saved 12,000. So where, if you look at the, yep, if you, if you look at the price difference, the biggest savings is the auto policy. And this is the other thing, we got to, just a quick, I mean, thing on the auto policy. So Travelers does large groups on a fleet rating versus individual rating. So there, I mean, that's where the savings is. The one thing to keep in mind is Travelers is the, the deductible on vehicles varies by vehicle value. So if we're looking at the vehicles over 150, I mean, equipment over 150,000, the deductible was the 5,000 versus 1,000. So we, there is a deductible sliding scale when it comes to that.
Which we don't have.
Yeah.
We don't have any.
There's, I think there was like three or four pieces of equipment that actually were over that amount. So there's not very much exposure at that point. The other thing too is EMC currently has a rider on the policy that pays for all windshields and the sheriff's department goes through a lot of windshields when they drive. So I would say, I think like six to 10 a year. So we're looking at, I mean, but if you're paying cash, you're looking at a couple thousand dollars for windshields. I mean, so that's just one thing to keep in mind. I mean, the savings still outweighs that. I just wanted to be, the exposure on anything I can think of.
The only, the other comment that I would make is that, and I, I don't care who we go with, I don't have a dog in a fight. The one thing we have to very much keep in mind, as you mentioned, the player, is if we go down to a carrier, I know what EMC has done over the years, okay? If we go down to one carrier, we're not getting back in the market. There's not a lot of incentive for Travelers to say, eh, you're just not, because we're sort of a captive audience. We need to look both short-term and long-term.
And, and the one thing, this is the same thing that schools struggle with right now. So you have the pool, which in this case is Nirma, and Travelers knows Nirma's there, so that's going to keep their pencil. That is, I mean, and there, with, with one beacon collapsing out of the public entity last year, there are going to be more entities entertaining municipalities. We just struggle with people wanting to come to Nebraska to write insurance because of hail.
Because of hail.
I mean, it just, it's, it's just where we're at. That's why you look at our home and auto rates, we pay, I mean, at home, we'll pay double what people pay in Colorado, not Front Range, Colorado, that's the same boat as us, but you get up to like the mountains or even Iowa. It's just where we are. So, and I mean, we can start everything effective today, everybody's ready to go. I mean, there's no issues. I already ran through the Port Authority, all that, it's covered. Currently, the Port Authority was added, Chris and I have talked about, because it, to, for a liability purpose for the group that's starting, eventually the Port Authority will move on to its own structure down the road. Travelers is fine with it because they do port authorities also, so there's no issues.
So, so how much is the Port Authority adding?
Nothing. It's just an additional insured on the policy. So, yep. It's just a liability.
Sounds like too good to be true. Sounds too good to be true.
For now, and eventually, for now.
Once they start operations, they're going to have.
Once they start operations, yep. We need to get operations in place and then I will place it, it will get placed with Travelers also because at that point, since it's two separate entities, but there's kind of a cross potentially down the road.
It's a weird relationship.
It's, yeah, it's a weird relationship, but it's just nice to have them with the same carrier because if something does happen, Travelers knows they have to pay for it and then they figure out which policy is going to pay what down the road, so.
Just to make sure I understand.
Yes.
If we renew with EMC, that's a less, it's a less than 2% increase?
Correct, yep. So you're going to go up 20, 15, 15,000?
15,000 for EMC.
Yep.
But it sounds like the better coverage is to go with Travelers.
I mean, it's the same, same coverage, they do municipalities, they do them well. I mean, you're not, I mean, you're not losing any, anything in my opinion, except, I mean, you're taking a little more risk with deductibles just because, like we talked about with the wind hail, with the autos. But I mean, liability wise, everything else is rated the same.
And as Joe pointed out, our wind hail risk because of the structure of our building is fat risking.
Yeah, because the jail doesn't have any, yeah, there's no, there's no buildings with EFS, right, Joe?
The jail has EFS.
Is there a lot of EFS on the jail?
No, 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 no.
Okay. Is there a lot? I mean, that's the one thing you, I mean, EFS can be very expensive, I mean, to replace. So, I mean, that is the one thing, and, but typically that only is with wind driven, like it's got to be a pretty good wind, but EFS can be kind of pricey to replace. But I would think with, I don't know how much on the jail is, but the, the larger building EFS claims I've seen have been like anywhere from 50 to 150,000. So, I mean, that's just one thing. That's the only exposure that I can think of. I always ask that question. I didn't know if it was all block or if it was some.
Oh, no, it's, it's EFS on 80% service-wise, you know.
At least the upper half.
Yeah.
Yep. So that is, that is the one, I mean, the roofs are fine, but that is one thing, that golf ball-sized hail with wind will damage EFS. So, so I mean, that would be the only, I mean, I think about all the other buildings in, in town, that would be the only one. And, and it's not just you guys that have to deal with that, that's just a pretty standard construction anymore.
Okay, well, it looks like we've got a couple of decisions to make, which carrier we go with? And then if we go with Travelers, whether we do the no wind and hail or do a 1%?
Take a stab at this. Mr. Chairman, I would move that Lincoln County moves to Travelers for insurance needs with a 1% buy down for wind and hail. That would be my motion.
And what would that be?
633.
Yeah, 633, 311. Based on the figures I have now. It's going to vary as we get through it, but that's going to be pretty, pretty close.
Which would be a savings of about 100,000.
107, oh, yeah, over 100,000.
Over on premiums last year.
Yes.
Hey, we've got a motion and a second, any other discussion? Rule call, please.
Brenz?
Aye.
Hughley?
Aye.
Weems?
Aye.
Luler?
Aye.
Butter.
All right, thank you, sir.
Okay, I'll get after it.
Thanks, Tanner.
Thanks, Tanner.
Okay, I will get you the stuff I'm going to need signed here in the next day or two, okay?
Okay. Thank you very much for your work on that.
No problem, thank you guys.
Hey, our next agenda item is to discuss and consider hiring pest and predator field operator or operators. This is an endeavor that Commissioner Weems and I have been working on. We conducted what we advertised for the position. We received two applicants. We had the good fortune to be able to interview both of those applicants. And I'll let my colleague, Commissioner Weems, comment on this as well, but my recommendation will be to hire on a seasonal slash part-time type basis that we hire both of those individuals. Commissioner Weems?
We have to expand upon that introduction. We're all aware that we formally adopted parade dog control program. So that kind of, that's kind of a game changer as far as having to staff it. It's really something historically that's not been much focused until, with the exception of last season, with Barry Johnson's participation with EFS, and he did, he did a great job for that. This thing, as far as, you know, trying to figure out how the pieces and parts work, it's, it's, some of it's a dartboard project, but essentially, we have two quality individuals that have credentials that we need to function. Both are willing to be on the roster as part-time and frankly, don't want to work if they're not busy. So the beauty would be if we can retain these two gentlemen that we did interview, and specifically Mr. Barry Johnson and Mr. Jerry Feist, both have history on predator control in general, parade dogs specifically. They worked in conjunction in the past and both of the surety state could work together when needed. That does not mean that they would both be necessarily on the job at the same time, but if you're going to do justice to the parade dog control program and, and make it viable, you're going to have to have field operators and know what the heck they're doing. And when the, the time is right to get on the, to get in these fields and control, you're going to, you're going to need boots on the ground, so to speak.
Yeah, because that window of pre-baiting and baiting, depending on weather, can be fairly narrow. So that figured in very prominently in our discussions. So that's.
Excuse me, I didn't mean to get choked up about that.
But anyway, we were very pleased that we had two very, very qualified applicants that both interviewed very well and we have experience with both of them and their job performance that I would still recommend that we hire both of those individuals.
Question?
Yes, sir.
First of all, thank you, it's a lot of work you guys have been spending a lot of time on that. I, I have two or three questions. Number one, when we look at the cost that we used to have, cost sharing with the federal program, we know what that cost was, vary a little bit up or down. A lot of cost, a lot of it startup cost. This is an annual program, I think that we have to renew every year, correct?
It would be in our budget every year.
Well, I mean, are these people, first of all, what's their classification as far as work?
Seasonal, part-time or seasonal, permanent?
Essentially permanent, seasonal.
And does, what does that mean? Does that mean that we have to renew them every year or is there no intent of renewing? Because this is pretty important, we talk about this now.
I think it's to renew each year.
Permanent would suggest, I'll let Tyler speak to it, but I would think that they would be just hired on a seasonal basis as we need them, but where Nebraska's.
Permanent, permanent is more, that's geared toward the fact they don't have to reapply for their job every year.
They do or don't?
They don't. Temporary would mean that they have no expectation of returning to work.
Okay, so they have an expectation of returning? That was my question. So, I'm looking at this optimistic-wise, and just food for thought, not for now, because there's too much work been done, but for down the road, maybe next year or the year after. I think it would be worth taking a look at cost effectiveness of this, this cost, as versus supplementing, as we do libraries or other things, a user. For example, I'm Charlie Smith, and I've got a prairie dog problem. I, Charlie Smith, hire these guys freelance. The county supplements them, fifty percent, seventy-five percent, twenty-five percent, something. So, we help that user, just as we do on a lot of other things. We supplement it, rather than having that control ourself. But we still make that available to them at some kind of a cost sharing. So, not to throw water on this now, because the work's been done and laid, but they have something to think about down the road.
Point well taken. Also, keep in mind, this is not apples-to-apples, because we've not had the history of prairie dog control.
I agree, I agree.
Just to compare this to the EFS program, it's really disingenuous.
Sure. Oh, yeah, I agree. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. But I do appreciate your point. Your point is appropriate. The thing about this startup, and the beauty of both these gentlemen putting themselves forward to be available to serve in a part-time capacity is, once you get this thing off the ground, you're going to find out who wants to pay for the service. And if they don't want to pay, these guys aren't going to be on the clock. Pure and simple. So.
With that being said, so there's an opportunity for the county to recoup a lot of the expense, just like we do at the weed department.
Exactly. It's going to be framed in a similar fashion. Do we know how all those numbers work? No, we don't. But the beauty of it is, is that Barry doesn't want to sit around. He's not a guy that sits around. Jerry Feist is the same way. They, they want to be busy. And they're either going to have work to do, or they're not going to be on the clock. Pure and simple. So.
And does this program limit their work to just prairie dogs?
No.
There are also other critters involved.
Right. And those fee structures can be worked out. But because, again, because the emphasis has been, we're going to get a full-fledged prairie dog control program, unique, other than Sheridan County in Nebraska. You're going to have to put legs under this thing if you're going to work.
And, and just looking at your spreadsheets here, which are fantastic. Thank you. I enjoy it.
Thank Tammy, because she did all.
Thank you, Tammy. I enjoy a good spreadsheet. But the startup cost, so the initial year will be the biggest investment.
It will.
And then, the cost will go down.
Oh, absolutely.
Following years.
And again, it's, it's tailored in such a fashion. You know, it was going to be dovetailed into the noxious weed, and probably down the road will be.
Could be.
But because of the various moving parts, and we've got two very experienced gentlemen, we didn't see essentially burdening the superintendent at the weed control office with any oversight or initial participation in this. That transition certainly happened down the road. But for now, it's a lot simpler. We've got two very seasoned people that the chairman can interact with them, and they'll still coordinate things with roads and noxious weeds as far as, excuse me, potential equipment sharing and those kind of things. We've had conversations with both of those departments, specifically with roads, surplusing a vehicle or two as needed. It won't impact his budget financially much of any, because he's got a couple of units that he would, he doesn't, he's not on the rotation process like the sheriff's department, so.
And, and some of those expenses that you see in our initial budget are, are higher than what they will be in actuality. We're plowing new ground here, so we're discovering a lot of things out here. And some of those expenses were guesstimations, would probably be the best way to put that. And there are several of those that have been cut significantly, some of them even in half. So.
Now, for example, let me interject. For example, the zinc phosphate that is used to treat towns, dog towns, you're looking at eighty bucks a bag for that, a buck sixty a pound. And you'll probably see consumption, even if they were full bore, maybe less than two pallets in a year. And it's, it's not going to be a tremendous outlay of, of capital for, for chemicals, which is very encouraging. And I, you know, we're getting this from people that do it, from the gentleman, both of the gentlemen that apply. So, we've got, we've got good information there.
And we have made a very significant commitment to controlling the prairie rodents, sometimes called prairie dogs. We've made a significant commitment to this county and the landowners to take care of that pest. And we feel that this is the best way to put legs under that program, plus other wildlife issues. And that's the base, part of the basis for our recommendations. Questions, further questions?
So as far as benefit packages go, where they're permanent seasonal, there does, there's no fringe benefits that the county will have to contribute to?
Well, it appears that the county may have to offer a retirement. It's going to be an issue that the board discusses at a later date for other part-time employees. But based on the information supplied from the clerk's office, they would start thinking that these are going to be individuals who can take advantage of the retirement program. I don't know that they're forced to, but I believe we are forced to offer it.
Other than that, no other benefits?
No other benefits.
The health insurance is within the discretion of the county.
Say that again, something about discretion of the county.
You have discretion of whether or not you offer health insurance to part-time employees, and currently do not. That's not controlled by state statute, unlike others.
I understand. So, but what did we say about this group? We said that we would need to offer them retirement that we don't currently offer to our other part-time employees?
Yes.
I'm, I'm glad we have this discussion now, because you can see a change in my voice. Is there a, is there a way? I, I pers, I would like to see us make this something that we would need to every year, make them reapply. And I think that being the case takes care of the question we just had right there, if I'm not mistaken. They don't have a, a expectancy that their job will be there next year.
If they do not have an expectancy for their position to be prepared the next year, then the county does not have to offer their retirement.
Thank you very much.
That is a benefit.
That would change them to a temporary seasonal employment, not a permanent seasonal employment.
This may not go anywhere, but I'm going to make a motion.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we offer a temporary seasonal predator field operator position to both Barry Johnson and Jerry Feist.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
So as far as providing them with an office or a storefront, is there?
They typically have worked out of their house, other than Jerry did have an office in the federal building. But essentially, we've got a couple of options. Storage of the material, which is going to be very small, can be done at the noxious weed office, because they already have chemical in there. About vehicles? The vehicles would be at the county yard. There's a workstation here in Photostat if they wanted to come in and do reports. We've discussed with both of them, maybe just having daily logs. They're good, they've done it anyway for USDA. So they both understand all this, how this works. They may end up with a laptop or a tablet. In coordination with Tammy, they would file their, their weekly service log, so that we know where they've been, cover their actions, and vice versa. So, both gentlemen, we, we talked about office in there, like, we don't, we don't really need an office. But I just need to know where, turn my reports in. And we've resolved that with, Tammy's going to coordinate that for us.
And then telephone service, so they, they would be provided with a phone where the requests for assistance would come in to a, a specific phone number?
Well, we're, we're just going to have them phone, for now, phone here at the switchboard, and Tammy will coordinate that, and make sure that there's transparency as far as communications. Joe Smith called. Jerry won't know.
Chairman will know that.
The control operators will know that.
And then there's an, an expense line for new vehicles. But we, we've already had discussion about transitioning used vehicles into that, which should reduce the cost. But there's also a line for four-wheelers? Well, four-wheeler repair. So do we already have four-wheelers?
No.
No. We're just, it's rudimentary budget.
Okay, I see.
We're just putting.
But I mean, this is a budget time, right? Because right now, the most.
No, this is just for reference. This is just for reference.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Oh, yeah. Kind of getting into the weeds a little bit there. So, this is just to give you a perspective on, because we don't know all these.
Thank you. Well, I think I was probably the one that asked that question back when we were reviewing our contract track with USDA about why don't we have prairie dog control? Because it was a real issue in my neighborhood.
Yeah.
So I appreciate all the work.
Unfortunately, we think it's a growth industry. Barry's got a list of forty clients. Whether or not forty of them only have money, I don't know.
Well, and when, when we opted to not renew the contract with USDA, I got some phone calls about that.
Of course.
So this is, this is definitely an agency that I support.
You're not going to get an opportunity to have two quality people willing to work on a part-time basis to solve our problem. So thank you to both of you for.
Okay, we have a motion that would label these hires as temporary seasonal. Everyone want to understand that?
I would, just for the record, you might understand that that might get changed for us by the rules.
Might.
Keep that in mind.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
Can you explain that to me?
Tyler can. He's the attorney. But I'm, I'm telling you, as an employer, the state may look at that differently than we do. I'm just, I'm just saying, throwing that out there, so nobody thinks they can get hit by a bus.
I just have a question. Do we need to designate if it's part-time or full-time?
Part-time.
The, the motion was for a temporary seasonal predator field operator, two of them.
It should be classified part-time.
Is that right, Tyler? That's classified part-time?
That's how they're classifying it right now, yes.
That's what I'm asking.
Yes.
So we need to designate that, if you feel like. Because it makes a difference on the hours, on reading, on the seasonal.
Then do I need to say part-time?
Temporary part-time seasonal.
Okay, that's, that's okay, Mr. Chairman.
There's an amendment to your motion, and I appreciate that.
Okay.
How about the second? Does it get?
Oh, thank you. I, I did make that motion, I guess, to a temporary seasonal, temporary part-time seasonal predator field operator. Thank you.
Okay. We have, we have a motion and an updated second. Any other discussion? Rule call, please.
Hubley.
Aye.
Luler.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Brenz.
Aye.
Woodruff.
I saw that gavel meant no further discussion.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you. And Commissioner Williams.
Thank you, guys.
Because I know you guys put a lot of hours into this.
Thanks to Jerry Feist and Barry Johnson for playing.
Thanks, guys.
Jerry and Barry, thank you.
The Jerry and Barry group.
I haven't heard either one of them accept yet, so.
Yeah, they may tell us no.
Yeah, who knows? Okay, our next agenda item is to, is a focus group discussion regarding the Lincoln County Comprehensive Plan update and the North Platte slash Lincoln County countywide housing update.
Judy Clark, Planning Administrator. And all I'm going to do is introduce our consultants, which I'm sure a few of you have probably seen before. Keith Marvin, he is sitting here. We do have a videographer, Will, just to kind of make you guys aware that.
Couple of you have already met Will.
Yeah, he, he may be videoing a, a little bit. But this is a focus group with you guys as commissioners, to tell them what you think about Lincoln County. So I'm going to let them take over and go from there.
Okay, please state your name and sign in, sir.
Okay. I need a second here. I'm going to.
Absolutely.
I'm going to have Aaron Sorrell come up with me as well. I'm Keith Marvin. Marvin Planning Consultants in David City, Nebraska. Sorry.
And your colleague's name again?
Aaron Sorrell. And besides the videographer, we've got Aaron Becker from our team, and Mason Herman on the, Herman on the backside there, that are going to be taking notes as we talk as well. So.
All right.
I appreciate everybody taking time out of your busy schedule for this. I, I feel it's very important. Judy's handing out some of the paraphernalia that we've created that's going to be, hopefully, you'll see a lot of this and hear a lot of discussion about this around the city and the county as we go forward. So, part of our goal right now is, we've actually got three projects going on with, actually with the city and the county. One is the Comprehensive Plan for both North Platte and Lincoln County, and we're also working on an update to the housing study for both North Platte and Lincoln County. So Aaron's focused, he's working with us on both. We're teamed up for every project. So what we're going to do today is probably have a mixture of questions that bounce between comp plan and visioning and that kind of stuff for the future, and then also some housing conversation as well, so that we can fulfill the focus group stuff on both sides. So we'll do everything we can to make this as painless as possible and as quick as possible.
Okay.
I guess Judy has also left a number of things here that we're asking the county to put out on their counter, those are the postcards and some hard copies of the survey. Just so you know, people ask, on the back of the card is a QR code, and there's a URL as well. And tiny URL is a legitimate URL. People, instead of having a QR code for every survey, we send everybody to one website. Aaron's working on finishing up the housing survey. They'll be able to answer all three surveys in one location if they choose to, by just going into the different project links that we have on that website. So.
Is that live yet? Because last time I went to the URL, it wasn't up and going.
It is.
Perfect.
So, actually, if you QR code that, we actually, I QR coded this morning, and it actually worked. So. And there are some posters as well to put up. So, I guess with that, Joe and Chris, please bear with us, because you may have heard these questions in the past when we did interviews. And those things are going to be on live on the internet. Will has done a fantastic job of pulling that information together and making synopses of everybody's interviews. So I guess it started out as, as commissioners, what do you want to see come out of the new comprehensive plan?
For, for me, for me personally, I'm a member of the West Central Digital Equity Task Force and Stakeholder Group in our area. So I would definitely like to see fiber installation be part of that plan through, through the entire county.
Okay.
One thing that I have noticed in our last protest session is, is that we have quite a number of homes in this county, in this town in particular, that are less than desirable. We need to have some renovation update of some of these older properties, maybe some of them that are unlivable or at substandard levels. They're nice, or number one, some of them, but they also could be utilized for some of the moderate income housing needs.
Would be, I would have, you stole my thunder a little bit. That's my big concern is, I'm not as focused on urban sprawls. Urban renewal that needs to happen. There's just so many properties that, it's just a waste of real estate. You've got houses that are unlivable. You've got lots in town here that should be developed, wouldn't, and I know it's not as easy as, to accomplish as to say it. And there's a lot of folks trying to remedy that, including some of the. a lot of folks trying to remedy that, including some of the, uh, community-funded, uh, housing projects, and, and they struggle with that because they, they share with me that, um, they've got funds to fill, for example, Habitat for Humanity. They've got funds, but they can't find people that are willing to let them have the lots.
Mm-hmm.
Um, they're holding, for the, for the lack of a better phrase, holding them up. Making it cost prohibitive, but, so I don't know how you solve that, but apparently there's a, there's a lot of lots in this town that are, that are not being developed because whoever owns them doesn't need the money, doesn't like the price yet. Okay?
I've got two things. Um, housing, or lack of housing stock actually keeps me up at night. I mean, knowing, knowing where we're headed as a, as a county, as a larger community in the future, um, we've got to address that, and it does go from, you know, making new lots available and getting the infrastructure out to those, uh, new developments, but it also ties right in with what my two colleagues just said as far as, uh, urban renewal and making sure that, you know, the infrastructure that we have in place already, that it's being utilized properly, uh, that, you know, we have lots in town that are vacant, we have lots in town that have houses that, quite frankly, probably just need to be scraped and start over. Um, so how do we have adequate conversation on that and maximize the opportunities in that regard? The other thing that I'd like to see is we have a segment of North Platte, the entire north side of North Platte. This is an opportunity for us to really work to rejuvenate that, that part of the community, um, to, to encourage growth and development on that side, uh, and really make the entire city, uh, one community, and I don't know that that's been the case in future or in past endeavors, and, and I think that we have an opportunity before us right now to have a concerted effort to make that a reality.
Let me paraphrase that and make sure I, I hear one of the things that I, I think I hear coming out of your comments, since you're talking as a county commissioner, I'm also hearing you say that there needs to be better cooperation between the county and the city to make these things happen.
Uh, I think that we have a good relationship between the county and the city. I, I would probably bar, by far, better than most counties.
Or at least continued cooperation.
Continued cooperation, yes. Um, each one of us, though, we represent segments of the city, and I represent a large segment of the north side of North Platte. I know Camp, Commissioner Weems represents another, uh, big portion of what is ward for in the city, and so there are constituents as well, and so just making sure that we're having that collaborative effort with the city, um, to ensure that that half of the city is, is receiving due attention is, is important. And how do we grow and extend that community out? Because the, the city's going to be experiencing growth. We have a lot of economic development coming in. Uh, it seems like over the past few decades, there's been a lot of growth south and west, um, but there's, you know, no reason to say that it can't, we can't grow our community north and east at the same time, so.
And the villages as well.
The villages.
The villages, yeah. You know, they need the same assistance of, I've got a constituent in Brady, for example, that, uh, has been trying for three or four years to get funding to, to re-site their house, and they, um, the program's in place, but the money's not there, and they're, they're at a dead end. So, you know, the villages have the same struggles. They've got dilapidated residences that, um, need to be razed or renovated and, and, you know, that, an opportunity to, to grow those small communities and keep those small schools running, um, this paramount to making sure there's housing there.
So is there a political appetite to, um, from the county's perspective, to fund those issues or be extremely aggressive on chasing grants for the villages?
Well, the one thing that seems to me in the four and a half, five years that I've been visiting some of these various organizations is, it's so, there's so much fragmentation. There's three, four, or five different organizations that are trying to assist in renovation of homes, build homes that are affordable, Habitat for Humanity, I've used that example, but there are others, and from my perspective, it just seems like we've got a lot of piecemeal and not any coordination, and maybe I'm wrong, but, um, there are a number of other organizations that have the same goal as Habitat, and it just seems like everybody's got their own little world going on, their own projects, and, um, they're not particularly well-funded. So to answer your question, would I have an appetite? I, I think I would have, have an appetite for a conversation to see how the county could participate, because if we can rejuvenate not only the, the city of North Platte, but our small communities out in the outlying areas, we've got a number of small towns that could use a lot of assistance, I'd be willing to look at that.
Senator Jacobson's, um, article in The Telegraph last few days talked about the micro-tiff program. Does that apply just to the city of North Platte or to the, how, the villages?
The villages would have to pass, um, appropriate language in the country to utilize that program, but it's, it's not exclusive to the city of North Platte. They just have to take that additional stuff, and we've been having those conversations with.
It's a statewide program for municipalities, so.
And I believe there's been some changes in the language to the program, so it's.
It's more friendly.
It is something that could possibly get better legs underneath it.
Yeah, yeah.
But does micro-tiff apply to just within the city or the village limits? It cannot be a rural residential property.
Counties do not have the capability to, to do tiff at this point in time. They, I know that there was a bill one time that actually looked at that, but, uh, I think it was probably counterproductive, because you really, truly, in most counties, want to focus growth of housing in the cities or the villages, because that's where infrastructure is.
You know, one thing that I'd like to talk a little bit about, uh, to Kent's thing, there have been groups that have tried to sort of package these needs before, you know, the various agencies. I know West Central's tried that at a time. We, you know, when our C and D came out, you know, that was one of their goals, but they just, nobody really put their hand around it, put it together, so I appreciate that. Mine, mine is project-specific, and I don't know how this should be involved in the comp plan, although I'm sure it can, certainly in the housing plan, but my first question is, when are you looking at, for your studies to be completed?
Uh, the comp plans, I will probably still be about a year, year and a half out. Housing study, we're trying to, well, part of it will be done before the end of the year for, to meet state statute.
Yeah, the missing middle study will be done by the end of the year, which is required by, under Nebraska law. The actual housing study, I'd like to wrap up by February, March.
Okay. Large employer coming to our community, Sustainable Beef. I'd like to see something specifically addressing that issue. I'd like to see us look at best practices from other communities that have had, uh, large meat placking, packing facilities come in, how they handled it, some of the things that, uh, you know, there's got, you know, we talked about Hershey, Maxwell, um, Brady, those are all, or should be in my mind, players in this housing need specifically for Sustainable Beef. We're not talking about ten or fifteen people coming in this year, and then we'll get, well, eleven, we're going to, we left over the next two years. We're, we're looking at a large influx of people. Bang, they're there. So I, I know that there's, as Chris does, several developments underway right now to address part of that, but it doesn't meet the need. So I'd like to see something really zeroed down, specifically addressing that and some of the things that we can do, and that's going to tie some of Kent's things too on funding, because that's a big part of it.
Yeah.
You know, just like anything else, um, you know, things are market-driven, so.
I know.
Go ahead.
I know that the community of Hershey is also working on their comprehensive plan and has employed Marvin Plan, and they can piggyback off of what you're doing for the county, is that correct?
Yes. And the housing study will cover Hershey as well, like the other one, the current plan did.
And I also believe Wallace is exploring their comprehensive plan, but I don't know that they have made a decision on that yet.
I know that we received some grant money, uh, to assist in this with Safe Roads. Is that correct?
Uh, you're, you're working on that, yes.
Yes. Um, for me, and it kind of ties into what Joe had just brought up with project-specific, uh, we have Sustainable Beef coming in, we're going to see quite a bit more truck traffic.
Yes.
Um, we also have the inland port, uh, they're having a first meeting tonight. Um, it won't be long, and ideally, we start seeing additional truck traffic coming in, uh, doing intermodal operations, uh, in that regard, and so for me, it's important that we are taking a look long-term, how do we mitigate truck traffic going through the village of Hershey, uh, through the city of North Platte? Does that mean that we have a direct spur to the interstate? Where does that make sense? That, that traffic is going to be, uh, it, it has the potential to be, uh, a strain on some of our county infrastructure if, if a lot of those roadways become congested, and so just making sure that we're working with our highway superintendent.
Yeah. Well, I know that Jesse has, poor, who works with, is working with us on FH, from FHU, is, uh, we've, he's shared with me that apparently NDOT has no appetite for another interchange on it through Lincoln County, but I've also seen FHU come DOT with ideas, and next thing you know, they're on the board.
Yeah.
Uh, they have a good way of making their points made.
Yeah.
Uh, and I'm glad that they're on our team, and Jesse will be here Thursday, I believe it is, when we have the transportation focus group, so that's going to be a good one, because I think we're going to have somebody from DOT here, and I believe somebody from UP is actually driving out from Omaha to be a part of that as well.
And in that regard, another somewhat personal aspect of that is, the truck traffic coming from the east, there is one access road that does not have a weigh station on it, weigh scale. Runs through county roads that Mr. Schultz has responsibility for.
Mm-hmm.
That could be a very significant problem, having heavy truck traffic in that more rural residential area.
Where is that? Which access is that?
East State Farm Road.
Okay.
Does not have a weigh scale on it.
The same could be said for traffic coming from north and south onto Highway 30. There's, there'd be no weigh station there either.
No.
They'll find their way around the weigh stations if they can.
That.
I know.
Basis for my point right there, so.
Um, I guess, um, this is great conversation. I mean, I, I don't want to write down questions because, in case we start having a lack of conversation, so. Aaron, you got anything specific?
Well, so one of the questions I, you already kind of, at least, Mr. Hughley touched on it, is one of my questions, what would you like to see us address compared to the 2018 study, which we're updating? So Sustainable Beef is obviously a major employer, the inland port is a major potential employer, so all of those will factor into our population and household projections and the, and the need going into that. Are there other, um, elements of the housing study specifically that you may want us to touch on outside of North Platte for, for a specific village you think deserve, not deserves, but is naturally going to have greater challenges, like Hershey is close to the inland port? Um, are, are there villages that I should spend more attention or time on versus?
I personally feel like Hershey and Maxwell will have the most impact, be just due to the location of both of those villages to the two new industries that will be impacting them the most.
Okay.
Although I will say, I feel like this is going to reach down to Wallace and Wembley and all.
Yeah, Sullivan and Brady's.
Every, every village will be impacted by the growth that we see.
Stapleton will be impacted.
So you mentioned, uh, the concerns about coordination of, um, some of the nonprofit CDCs, uh, or just various housing providers. So do they play in the sandbox well together, or is there, are there turf wars occasionally?
I don't know that there's been turf, I don't know that there's ever been a reason for turf wars.
Okay.
Um, we've never, it's been decades since we've experienced the, the future that is right at our fingertips.
Okay.
Um, I think that my understanding and conversations that I've had with the various different entities that are working on all these things siloed, albeit, um, is that they do have an appetite to work collaboratively, and, uh, they're eager to have their part in this, so just making sure that we're having that dialogue with them, getting everybody on the same page is going to be important.
So Sustainable Beef obviously moved here without a concern, or maybe they have expressed concerns about housing, but they're, they're building regardless. Have you heard from current or other, um, potential employers that, where the housing market has impacted their expansion plans or relocation plans?
Housing is an issue, it, and I use the, the term issue lightly, but it is part of conversation with every economic development project that we have looking at us right now. Um, it, it's, that's, it's just our number one hurdle that we have to address.
And is, and also just the number of people employable, so, you know, we sort of keep growing that little ring, you know?
Mm-hmm.
To show us in a favorable light.
What do you mean, that little ring?
Well, you know, if you're looking at a major employer, that you, you don't have the people you need within a ten-mile radius that grows to fifteen or twenty, and we're up fifty now, so, I mean, you know, it's.
Gotcha, okay.
Send out information, that's what we draw.
Question I have, and Joe, you might be able to add to this with your professional background, is, okay, we get told, we were told five years ago with the current housing study, we get told this in all these other places, that one of the problems with affordable housing is there's no contractors available, because they can make more money doing custom homework than doing affordable housing like they used to do, you know, in the seventies and eighties. Any thoughts on how, or unique things about this county that we can probably pull and do that?
Two totally different animals. We're talking about a local contractor that does a custom home. He does two or three homes a year.
Right.
We're not talking about tract home people, because we don't have any of the ones we've drawn. We've drawn from the Lincoln, Omaha area or elsewhere, because we don't have that capability locally, so they're just, in my opinion, they're two, it's not apples and oranges.
I, I just wanted to make, make sure that there wasn't something that we're missing here in the countywide, you know, versus, you know, saying that you need to go outside the county, because you'd like to keep as much of that economic growth local as possible.
And, yeah, and, and if I may interject on that same point, there are folks that either want to or are trying to get involved in custom house building, home building, but the finances, the financial part of it, is hindering some of those, I call them startup kind of contractors from being able to be major players in that market.
I would say that we've, we've also had, I mean, there's been numerous conversations with the contractors that we have locally, and I don't know that there's appetite for them to do anything else at large scale.
Okay.
So.
Just, just double check.
They're happy with their niche that they're in.
We heard that five years ago, and I just wanted to make sure that there wasn't something that had changed or not.
But that might, you know, they may get some table scraps and do subcontract work that keeps them busy too. There's not just the GCs, you know, there's the subs that, uh, everybody benefits when we have, um, you know, a development that comes into town.
But to, but to that point, we have a lack of subs, subs as well. I mean, we have a few different projects going, and it's subs leaving one project to work on another one, uh, we're running into issues there, so.
So utility capacity aside, um, do you think there's an appetite in the villages for? increased density? As doubles, triples, that kind of thing?
Yes.
Yes. One of the conversations I keep hearing is, if we don't get ahead of our housing shortage before sustainable beef opens up and the rail park takes off, our community's going to grow in an unhealthy manner. And so, I feel like that is something that is, we need to have a priority conversation about.
But I also know that the Board of Trustees in every village that I've gone to and attended their meetings, they're very excited about what's going on, and they're eager to take advantage of that growth.
Yep.
Any other thoughts on the housing side that you want to import on?
I just want to make sure that we're being cognizant as, and particularly with the rail park and the inland port district, that we have, that we're being very forward-thinking about how that port district may expand, and it will likely be, you know, industrial use out there, and that we don't have housing developments that are popping up, and we have butting of heads, so that we're being very wise in that plan.
Yeah, that first subdivision really will potentially derail industrial expansion.
Exactly.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. Real quickly on a couple of things with the comp plan, what are some of the things, other than housing, that the county seems to be struggling with, that we need to take a hardcore look at?
I'd say mixed-use areas where we've got urban and rural butting heads, that's never going to go away, but it comes up every year with people who own an acreage, and maybe their neighbors aren't as user-friendly as they want them to be, I don't know. Get over governmental about it, but there just really seems to be a struggle there to accommodate both of those residences. We've had them come up in the tax protest season, where it's kind of one of those things, who came first? But you can see, you can look back, and you can see that there was absolutely very low planning in those subdivided acres, as far as the obvious expectation that we're going to have rural operations clashing with suburban dwellings. It's a real problem.
Well, especially west, northwest.
It is, it's, and I'm sympathetic, because I'm a landowner and cattle owner, so I'm sympathetic to the guy that was there first.
Yeah.
You know? But on the other hand, once we, you know, where we're going to expand these, and it's inevitable, it's not, you know, the growth is not going to be just in the city of North Platte, that we think that through very well, on how we define coexistence, and perhaps additional, there's a lot of these things that were, folks came in and said, oh, okay, I'm going to divide this 40 acres I've got, and, and they made a mess, and it's an eyesore, and it was not provisioned within the plating or the permit process. They just, they started to, they weren't well-capitalized, and maybe they got one person to buy and build a house, and, and we've had a couple that went back to rural. But thankfully, they didn't make a lot of ugly disturbances there, it just looks like a pasture, but there are other instances, and this has been brought up, planning and zoning meetings by citizens who said, we're not stringent enough on how we define expansion and what your requirements are in some cases, and, and do we have a plan, a mitigation plan, if you decide this is going to go away, or otherwise be modified from the original intent of why you divided this into three acre lots, or whatever? But that's a real concern with a lot of folks, because I don't like driving by that every day. I can cite you a couple of those, last of 83, but I don't know, I don't know that, how you solve that, but it comes to mind that that's a real, it's a real problem. How you coexist there.
So, I'm hearing you say that some of the struggle is with the acreages that are wanting to go out there and develop near ag operations, or whatever.
Yeah, and, and/or a family member, you know, you've got some, I can think of a couple of families that have been in ag for years, and descendants, maybe got a piece of it, and they sold it off for housing, and, well, quite honestly, it's a nuisance for the existing rural ag production operation and like this. There's not necessarily a magic way to fix that, but it's just something that, as we grant use permits and expand urban dwellings, I think we need to be cognizant of that, and because a lot of them, they don't have them, well, they're not well-capitalized, and so they don't necessarily develop the right way, there's no, maybe, you know, septics, and maybe laid-out roads, dedicated roads, and, you know, somebody takes 40 acres and just starts selling lots. Hillcrest, for an example, north of North Platte, was developed in the 70s, and there's no, there was no comprehensive drainage plan. There's some serious problems, and I feel terrible for some of these homeowners, because they bought, they didn't build the house, they bought a house, and every time you get a tornado, it floods their property.
You don't have any drainage issues or septic soils in this county.
But, you know, that's, you know, that, probably nobody even thought about that, because everybody, they all put their own well and their own septic, but there's no HOA to have the ability, if it has any deed, not on the deed, I don't even know if they officially have one or not, but very little recourse, and, well, it's laid out now, that's, damage is done, there's essentially, there's a couple of those, there's literally no way to solve. But, anyway.
Okay.
I think when we do expansion, I think we have to get a little more detail as far as defining what we expect them to do as they develop that property.
For me, go ahead.
To that note, because it's related, although it does deal with housing, is just making sure that our language is correct, as far as cluster developments and SIDs, and, you know, where does it make sense? If we had somebody that wanted to utilize that, A, that it's friendly for them, and where does it make sense in the county to do so?
In my book, SIDs are a four-letter word.
There's, there's a lot of bad experiences out there, but there's also a lot of success. I mean, you look at Douglas County, everything west of 72nd was developed with SID, so...
Yeah, I don't think Elkhorn Valley would be there if it wasn't for SIDs.
No. So...
As we grow our community, housing is probably a top priority, but after that comes all the things that people move to a community for. So, recreation.
Yep.
Retail. We want to keep as many of those shopping dollars here in our community, instead of us having to road trip to Grand Island for the things we want, whether it's clothing, household goods, groceries. We need to consider all of those things. And recreation is a big deal. Back when I was looking for a community to settle in, it was all about the job, but I know my kids, when they consider moving somewhere, they, they look at, you know, the recreation and entertainment opportunities also.
Community amenities.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Any more things on struggles? Last one I have is, what do we need to protect in the plan?
What do we need what?
To protect.
Like natural resources, natural features.
Our parks and, parks and recreation. We have quite a few that aren't just within the city limits. We have a lot of parks and fishing opportunities outside the city limits that will need protected as housing comes in, and businesses.
Going back to Commissioner Williams's comment, I'm hearing also that we probably need to protect agriculture as much as possible.
We do, absolutely.
Our largest employer.
We need to strike a balance.
Yeah.
That's, you know, cognizant of protecting our agricultural heritage and the driver of our economy, while still also embracing some growth, and how do we do that appropriately?
But there's got to be, it's got to be balanced.
Yeah.
And again, back to personal experience with Feedyard, we fed cattle to find feeding operation for years. Don't do that today, because we didn't renew our permit when that, the new DEQ regs came in, but our neighbor, who's a very good neighbor, by the way, a very large feeder operation, he does a great job, however, I protested his expansion, but found out in the process that I couldn't stop him from coming closer to me, once he had the initial permit. I find that onerous, because in that process, there would have been a number of folks at that hearing, that wouldn't have, you know, that otherwise stayed home, because most folks, and myself included, didn't realize that once the permits are placed, then you have lateral movement allowed. Well, there's no mitigation.
Does the, does the permit set the geographic area?
It does, and then, and then allows a finite number of expansions.
I see.
Okay? But to my point is, is that it impacts property values. I'm not against the feeding operation, and again, he's done a fantastic job, very good operator, controls odor extensively well, extremely well. But in order, for a balance of fairness, you have to recognize that adjacent landowners are subsequently impacted by that, because you can't, you no longer put a residence on some of these adjoining properties or in close proximity, because of the rules and the regs. I find it a little bit problematic there, that is something I'd like to see.
How many critters does he have, right now?
Fifty-five thousand. Somewhere in there. He's a big one. He's, again, it's not, I'm not throwing rocks, just a dumb one at all, just using an example, because it's a real-life example.
Right.
I live there. He's done a great job. Been a good, good neighbor. But each time you move any kind of, if you put an urban expansion in, you're essentially, you're kind of doing the same thing to an existing rural operation, ag operation as well. So, again, I recognize, being in agriculture, that you want to protect those folks too. But if you, if it's clearly defined when you start these expansions, whether it be an urban dwelling, or whatever, feedlot operation, the implications of where, how it impacts down the road, that's very important, that's key to me, to me, that's key to seeing if you have the proper balance as far as landowner rights and...
Well, in the future land use plan, it would make sense then, for those areas, for us to prioritize areas that are not going to be affected by a feedlot expansion, and lower on the threshold, or raise the bar, I guess, maybe, to discourage, to some extent, residential development, where that feedlot could expand to, up to wherever, because you don't want to buy that house in the 20 years, or 15 years, or 10 years, all of a sudden, you've got the feedlot on your back door, and you had no idea it was there.
Well, and it, and there's not a lot of that, there's, you know, and that's been, like I said, that's been resolved, because they're, I think they've expanded to the level they can. But at any rate, it just needs to be a good balance between, and because again, we were there, we were there before the 50,000 head feedlot operation too, so there's two sides to those things.
And it's going to be interesting to see what happens in the next six months, because talking with Judy, her and I have been asked to speak to two different groups of people that are looking at county zoning right now. She's talking to a group that the governor put together, and I'm talking on the 10th to the policy group for Farm Bureau, State Farm Bureau. So, it'll be interesting to see what, you know, comes out of that whole process. You know, our governor is not, not necessarily, he's never been a real big fan of livestock zoning in the state of Nebraska, so it'll be interesting to see where we can come up with, and meet him in the middle. But I think it's beneficial, not only to the county, but it's also beneficial, if you do it right, to the producer.
So, does there come a point where our comprehensive plan overlaps with our planning and zoning rules and regulations, or is that something that you guys look at?
Your comprehensive plan is going to be your guide for your zoning code. So, what we do, what we do is, we're, we'll develop the comprehensive plan that takes these comments and that, and creates a policy out of them for everybody to review, and then we take that policy guidance, and we translate that into zoning code at the end. That way, your code is then supported by different pieces of evidence, makes deputy county attorney's job a little easier, if we do it right, and everything else, so. Anything else to add? I know you guys were on a tight schedule, and we're just a little early.
Anything else from the board?
We are meeting on these, we've on the posters, I know Kevin and Judy both have schedules, we will be meeting at different places around the county.
Tonight's the Moriah Lutheran Church in Hershey.
Yep.
And then...
Took a picture of it.
Tuesday, is it the, the historicals?
Historical museum?
Yeah.
Museum?
Lincoln County Museum.
Wednesday at the fairgrounds, Thursday at Nebraska Land and National Bank.
Yeah, so, Tuesday and Thursday nights will be North Platte-focused, and then tonight and Wednesday night will be county-focused.
What times are those?
They start at 6:30, and go, we're scheduled till about 8:00.
What's the one thing that we can do to help you guys?
Put this stuff out as much, yeah. There are, Judy left extra copies of this, to spread the word, take them to nearby communities. We're going to have them eventually in all of the village halls, our goal is, if you run out, see Kevin or Judy, because we bought, we brought 5,000 postcards out. There's plenty.
I know, we've already, I know Michaela and I have already been pushing this at the village boards that we've been going to, and getting the word out regarding the survey, making sure that there's broad participation with that survey.
The housing survey will go live today.
Perfect.
And, and like Chris said before, our communities are so excited about the possibility of the growth in our communities, which we haven't had in a long time.
Right.
And they're, they want to be involved, they want to have a say, and it looks to me like this is their opportunity.
Yeah. But you guys have made tremendous strides since, in the five years that I've been out here, so, kudos. Landing those major employers is huge.
We're not done yet.
Right.
And, I mean...
The work's never done.
It's not, I can speak from individual, personal experience, is, this stuff is exciting. I live in David City, and we're seeing some things happen that we've never thought would happen. We're seeing Acres build a $35 million store, and mechanic shop in our community, and we're watching AGP build a $700 million bean processing facility in our community, and they want to be part of the city limits, so that even helps our tax base, that, once the TIF gets taken care of. But it's fun to be a part of that, but it's also a lot of work. It's a whole lot of work.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, everybody, hope to see you tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ellen.
I don't know if we can avoid having to do the retirement deal.
I mentioned Brady's gonna see a lot of growth too because of that plant that's going to the Goffburg. It's 2,000 people will build it, 700,000 people will work it.
There's already folks there that are in Goffburg.
Goffburg's gonna have to double their electrical grid.
Is that right?
The electrical for that plant is gonna take up as much as the whole town.
Entire consumption today?
They're building a second water tower already.
Oh, wow. There you go. Bingo.
It seems to be that the real drag on it is having the working capital.
A number of other can endeavors. So it's always the biggest problem. Margins aren't all that great on it.
Unless you're doing it at significant scale.
Exactly. You got three.
I got two. Now that you mention it, you are exactly right.
Just pointing that out.
Okay.
Swap with Joe, he probably wouldn't know this.
Tyler, are we okay if we resign? Joe will become a senior.
Maybe.
Well, I ain't gonna say.
Well, I can always pass him back to him.
Okay, our next agenda item is to discuss and consider allocating funds for Nebraska Inland Port of the Plains from ARPA funds. And I believe Commissioner Bruns, you may have had something to mention in this regard?
Yes, sir. I asked, I asked for this to be put on the agenda. As everybody knows, we have the first meeting for the Port of the Plains Board of Directors this afternoon at 2:00 PM. They have a long road to hoe, so to speak, moving forward as far as getting things up and operational. The Municipal Inland Port Authority Act authorized Department of Economic Development to create a subaccount specifically for port authorities. And they, in the statute, they authorize for, it's $5 million in first fiscal year and then the following fiscal year, so two-year period, another $5 million to be put into that subaccount for the purposes of benefiting port authorities from a capital perspective with the infrastructure that they have to put in place.
And did they mention who that is from?
That is coming from the state through the state's revenue. So the state will fund that subaccount with the Department of Economic Development that port authorities can go and apply for funds through. Now, that act also allows for up to five inland ports to be established. All indications are we will likely only have two moving forward in the state, ours and then Dodge slash Fremont Counties port. And so indications that I've been getting from DED, the program managers, are that they will likely, because the needs are going to be very similar for these ports to get established as far as the infrastructure they have to put in place, crane operations, what have you. They will likely tend toward a 50-50 equal share for the ports. That said, that program, even though the legislation was passed, I believe in 2020, 2021, that program has not been completely stood up yet. The funding is still sitting in the governor's office as far as some of the backend checks that they have to do before DED is able to actually get that account established and create the application process. Well, we have two inland ports created in the state already, and ours is starting the process of getting up and operational, starting tonight. They need some funds, particularly for the administrative costs that are going to be associated with getting up and going. And so they don't have any other forms of revenue right now. And it would be my ask that we allocate some of our ARPA funding because I believe that we're allowed to by all means through past precedent and allocating to other political subdivisions. And then the Municipal Inland Port Authority Act allows them to receive funds from us. I would ask that we grant some funds to them from the ARPA funds to help with their consulting costs, their upfront consulting costs, the minute dollar amount that's going to be associated with getting appropriate bonding put in place for their treasurer. And then I also know that they will likely need to make some site visits to other ports in the country. They'd like to visit at least two, likely only two, to get a good idea of what this is going to entail and to learn from those existing port authorities on do's and don'ts and hurdles that they had to cross and just learn from those experiences that others have had already as they get their port authority up and going. So I don't, I'm not asking for a consideration for a ton of money, 30, 40, maybe 50,000, you know, one-time grant to go to this political subdivision for their use. So that's...
Would that be refundable?
I was gonna say, why would we not make that in the form of a loan to the state? You know, the state, when they get the state funds, the $5 million, maybe we could be replenished and use ARPA some more.
That's this board's prerogative. I just wanted to bring it up for discussion and, you know, start that dialogue.
I think that'd be a great thing if we did that because if they've already been allocated or will be allocated to state funds and $2.5 million, you know, make that a loan and we can turn around and reuse those ARPA funds for other purposes that we would have also.
Oh, Tyler, tell us if this is a acceptable way to utilize ARPA funds.
If you're asking me, and if you're asking me my opinion based on what ARPA says, yes. I know there are some other entities in the state that may disagree about that, the auditor's office being one of them. But frankly, I think the supremacy clause probably kicks in. Federal law specifically says that the political subdivisions that receive these funds, like Lincoln County, can use them for the provision of any governmental services. So I think there's gonna have to be a legal discussion that's well above my pay grade. But yes, I believe that we could do this.
With the exception of the one thing you were gonna say they can't be used for is?
Well, they can't be used for rainy day funds. You can't pay back indebtedness and you can't fund pensions with them.
Thank you. So would the funds be better if we approved sending funds there? Which sounds like a good idea since they're probably not gonna have bake sales or slave options.
Probably not.
Probably not. Indentured servant options, I should say. Excuse my language. But could that money come from another fund we have other than ARPA?
Inheritance types?
Keno. Anything, any other funds?
I don't know if we can.
What about the?
I would, I'd feel more comfortable with ARPA myself.
And that's why I'm asking for ARPA because ARPA gives us the latitude.
The others...
And it's not already, I mean, our other revenue sources, like the Keno funds, they're going toward bridges. We already have those kind of...
Doing county services because they're county taxes. They're going to county services. I'd rather say that way myself. That's just me.
The other thing about the ARPA funds is if the board does make those as a loan and it does get paid back, they don't get, they don't come back to the county as ARPA funds. They come back to the county as general fund funds.
Which is a clause.
Okay.
I got a couple hundred thousand.
So to Joe's point, I mean, I'm not, I'm not opposing throwing some ARPA money there if we need some operations capital. But to Joe's point, if they are in fact gonna get earmarked for a substantial amount of money for the state, makes sense to me to loan $50,000 and make an ample fund to reimburse when they want funds from the state.
So the next question I would have, to Joe's point, if we increase this, they do have the potential to start transloading operations right away. Not trans, intermodal operations. Transloading is different. I'm learning a lot through this entire endeavor. But intermodal operations right away because they have the spur and they could start bringing in revenue. We have no idea how long it's gonna take for the subaccount to get established and that application process to get stood up or what that's gonna look like.
You're not getting any feedback from the DED about that timeline?
I have, no, we have a meeting. So the governor has his ag and economic development summit on the 8th and 9th. And there's gonna be some meetings that take place concurrently with that that center on intermodal operations and specifically the inland ports. And it's gonna comprise DED and DOT, the governor's office, and then local stakeholders. So I'll be involved in some of those meetings. And this is gonna be an issue that I heavily push on is, look, this needs to get done because that was intended to be startup capital for these ports to get their operations going. And right now, we're moving faster than what resources are being allocated. And that's to the detriment of the state, in my opinion. So... But as far as a timeline, no, there's nothing solid. DED, the program managers have had no guidance. It's literally stalled out with the governor's office.
Well, and if this is gonna be a loan, we have until December 31st of 2024 to make another loan. If need be.
If need be. Concern I would have is, we all have some pet projects and we do have to have those funds encumbered by the end of...
December 31st, 2024. You better have something to show for your money.
And I know that there's gonna be requests coming in to utilize some of those funds. So...
You know, the... I just can't help but believe that our new and current governor, proactive gentleman, and when he wants to see things done, he usually makes sure they happen pretty quickly. It's just his nature, you know? That, you know, maybe with Senator Jacobson and yourself, some other people speaking with him, that, you know, his department head that he appoints might not have a fire lit under him to get some of these things taken care of because it is an important matter.
That's the hope with our meeting that we're gonna be having.
I mean, surely they understand that it's hard to start doing anything productive without funding.
And they wanted us to have these inland ports.
They supported this and encouraged us and so it would be...
Do you know if the governor will be in Kearney on the 8th?
Yes.
It's his summit conference.
Maybe I should put aside the Kansas State, Colorado State rivalry and have a discussion with a colleague of mine.
If you would like to attend that meeting with me, I would welcome it.
Okay, colleagues. Before I would be willing to go further than, you know, we say they have some things they could be doing right now. That goes to, in my opinion, a whole lot more detail that I'd wanna know about.
Yes.
In some kind of a closed session or however we can do it before we do that. But I would be willing to make a motion that we authorize a $40,000 loan to the inland port authority to be paid back within 30 days of their receipt of inland port funds from the state of Nebraska and/or, let's see, what is today?
Last day of July.
The 31st of July, 2024.
Is that enough fun? Is that realistic?
You know, we just, just one motion. I mean, I think it would be enough for startup money. I mean, my God. Well, I don't know. I shouldn't say that.
What is the interest rate?
Did we get a second?
No, second. Second discussion.
Okay. I think the interest rate should be determined by the chairman.
Just a thought, but perhaps instead of authorizing a loan to an entity that A hasn't formed yet and B hasn't asked for it, perhaps the board would just consider taking some action on authorizing a loan at an amount to be determined if they apply for it. That way, when they have their discussions later today, they can decide maybe what they need, be able to provide you a little more detail in some sort of an application for the funding. And that would give non-quorum subgroups of this board enough time to think about any other conditions you may want to put on it.
Good point. Maybe they want to go to a bank to get that.
A lending institution instead of the county.
They've got some potential revenue for collateral. I mean, the state of Nebraska's law is still pretty good.
I think legally speaking, it would be sufficient for the board to authorize the loan should they receive a request for one.
But, you know, speaking about that, you know, the point about the interest rate or no interest or all of those things are things that we need to talk about. Tyler's gonna, I shouldn't say obviously, but I would hope would be involved in the drafting of that instrument. And so how do we do that? We, there's a lot to be determined.
Maybe we just share with that newly formed authority that there's an appetite to assist and leave it at that until they, as Tyler points out, they first A ask for help and B define what that looks like.
Perhaps I should revise my guidance to simply suggest that this board take some action to set some money aside from ARPA for purposes of making a loan.
I think I understand that. Okay, so my motion was to grant the loan, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Okay, could I amend that, that we set aside $40,000 in a fund for purposes of a loan to the newly formed inland port authority with the particulars to be worked out by the inland port authority committee and legal counsel at a near... and legal counsel at a near time.
So just to that point, I don't know that we wanna set it aside in a separate fund.
I don't either.
No. Oh, not a separate fund, just dollars.
Just make a commitment.
We're gonna, we're gonna earmark up to forty thousand.
Oh, of our ARPA.
Friendly amendment to your.
Oh, sure, I would accept that. So earmark up to forty thousand from our existing ARPA fund. Well, I'm, I'm not even sure what the motion is anymore, but it sounds good.
Me neither, Joe, I'm gonna go back and watch the video.
But I, but to Tyler's point, I, I now really like the idea that we just.
Maybe we should just wipe the slate clean and start over.
I mean, if we don't take action today, it's, I think we have a pretty good idea the board wants to support. Or, or fund, with funding. But in order not to pigeonhole ourselves into a vote on a formal action, why don't we just say, "Port Authority, by the way, the board seems to have an appetite to assist you in operations capital. What does that look like from your standpoint?" And submit a request forthwith, and, and we can weigh in.
I appreciate that, because I wanted something that we could go tonight to this meeting, and as we have a top and agenda item on their agenda that deals with revenue, that we had something to alleviate.
Some idea.
Some heartburn that I know that that Board of Directors is going to have as far as, look, we're charged with getting this thing operational, we don't have any capital to do so. I just wanna make sure that we're alleviating some of those concerns.
I mean, I feel like the Lincoln County has contributed a large sum of money to this project already, and I'm open to continuing to support it. I think it's great for our county as a whole. But there are also other entities that are gonna be profiting from the Port Authority being here. And maybe we need to explore an ask of the city and the chamber and to, to also contribute to their startup funds. It, I don't know that I feel like it should be all county responsibility. And also, I'd like to make sure that all the loose ends are tied up with, with the items that we already have in motion out there. I'm, I'm not opposed to a loan. I'm, I'm more on board with a loan than just giving them more money. So the loan changes everything for me. If they can pay it back with the, the startup money that they're gonna get for DED. But I'd like to make sure that everything we've committed to is already covered out there. I, I've, I've had some questions out for a while on some items. You and I've had conversation, but I haven't gotten solid answers to.
Which one?
On, on the property taxes and on the utilities. So I, I haven't seen any utility bills come through here yet. So, since we purchased the property. I don't, I don't know how those have been covered.
We'll find out what's going on with that.
Okay.
Hey, so.
I do like the loan, I, I like the loan.
I like the loan, yes.
I, I think, what I hear, unless somebody's violently shaved your head nose, there is an appetite to assist. We've got, we've got a lot of skin in the game.
A lot.
So we've got, as a board, we wanna, we don't know how we're gonna frame this, but we wanna help somehow.
So maybe this is an item we actually table.
I mean, do you guys feel comfortable going to the meeting tonight and telling them that, yeah, we are, we, there is an appetite around this table for assisting?
Do you think, do you think they'd be willing to do that?
Yeah.
I believe they would.
No, I think, I'm asking if that's enough of a commitment, just a verbal.
Well, we, we meet every week, for God's sakes.
Yeah, exactly. I, I personally think it is.
Okay, I think it would be.
I don't hear anybody down at the table saying we're not gonna help. I mean, we've already got so much invested. We wanna, first of all, you want these people to go tour these facilities and make sure they're getting it right. It's important.
I see a lot of value in the face-to-face and developing some, some.
You know.
Relationships.
I, I know how I would vote on my own motion, and it wouldn't be in the affirmative, after what you've said. So I, I would rather withdraw my motion.
Thank you.
And ask for a withdrawal of a second.
I will withdraw my second.
Okay, great. We're on the table, this, and we're gonna let the inland port subcommittee.
I think they heard from me, I think they heard from us, didn't you?
I got, I think they know what our thoughts are. Is that okay?
We can work on that.
Okay, great.
It was up to four thousand, so.
Okay, Tyler, is there a need for a closed session?
Thankfully, no.
Your concerns from elected officials, department heads, or their representatives? I have one thing I would like to bring to the board. The North Platte Senior Center and Home Delivery Report. This past twelve months, thirty-nine thousand one hundred meals were served.
How many?
Thirty-nine.
I mean, how many months?
The last twelve months.
The, the fiscal year?
Okay. The fiscal year twenty twenty-two, the year before, thirty-five thousand. This is a nine, almost a ten percent increase. And food costs are going up. Shortages are fairly real. Thank God, they received a fifty thousand dollar endowment from an estate in this county. But just food for thought, no pun intended. I will keep this meeting open while we're working through these claims.
They have to shorten the JRH.
Jason, how are things going out in your way?
Hope somebody else takes time to read these.
Nothing to report against.
That is good news. Jason, did you get a call from Brian Hope?
Yes.
Good. You were having discussions with him about that?
Yeah.
I was on the board when that happened, that's a tough situation down there.
Yep, we did look at it, and we're going to, told him I think we would have some interest in exploring it, cooperating with them. And he's supposed to get back to me as soon as he gets some cost estimates.
Good.
Together, so we'll have an idea of a dog ride.
Thank you.
Yep.
Was pretty tragic for the family that used to live down there.
You have.
Jason.
Chris, would you be available in the morning to join me at Muggs?
Sure.
Did you get any last night?
I did.
A lot?
I did not check the gauge. I checked the gauge all last year, I haven't checked it once this year.
Where's the last one I just saw?
I'm seeing some correlation.
Was it from?
Dick won.
He won by a rain gauge after.
I think I'm gonna take mine down.
Was either one of them?
No. No.
I guess this is Brandon's line.
I haven't noticed anything. I said, you can't do it after a drive.
Yes, this is Brandon's line.
Dick has put a rain gauge up for years.
But the thing that looks funny is that.
Why, why they're not superstitious, right?
No.
Good luck this afternoon, gentlemen. Hope you have a great meeting.
I know they do testing, you know?
What times you're meeting?
Two.
Um, I see now who all, if you know yet, is gonna go to NICO in December. I think I submitted me.
I thought I did too.
For what?
NICO, I got yours, Joe.
Tyler's going, right? That's why I'm prodding.
They apparently didn't get much feedback on changing the dates from December to a different month. Remember, they sent out that survey twice?
I don't know where else you put it. It's about as slow a time as there is.
You know, for there was a time when we split one winter, one spring or winter. But, you know, that went away, yeah. When we got to go in December, because October, most of the guys never made it in October.
Every, every month has its busy thing for different industries.
But we have so many ag people, you know, involved that.
As far as ag goes, that's about as slow as it gets, though.
Yeah.
Harvest is winding down, for the most part.
And you're not caving.
It's blizzards, you think, unless you're a bull producer, you are.
It's just for those people that don't like driving on bad roads, which I don't mind. I drive bad enough anyway, doesn't matter if the road's bad. Your mic, your mic is light.
Your mic is light.
You know, I, I, I'm speaking the truth, I just lay it out there.
Maybe we should consider hiring a bus service to take us.
It's not, it's not the road condition, it's no like cough syrup to go drinks before you get in the car. That movie from, or line from Bill Murray? It's not so much. That's the way to traffic, it's all the cough syrup I drank before I came to work.
Train that started at Scotts Bluff and just come all the way to Omaha?
Mm-hmm. They used to.
Becky, do you have anything for us?
I rode that with, it's gonna back up.
Right?
Nope.
And those aren't one of the ones that you heard about.
I wish they'd bring the passenger trains back.
They'll go to have a car with this when we get somewhere, you know? On a short pole.
The village of Imperial is also experiencing a delay in getting their DED funds. They were granted a million dollars for housing development, workforce housing development. And we had a house we wanted to bid on to, to start the subdivision, and we couldn't do it because the funds have not been released yet. So it does present some challenges.
Some disconnected DED with.
But it's the repair on here. And the one at Weed's that broke down, I think it had a.
Is that more claims or the ones you?
No.
She's starting, trying to make me nervous.
Becky, did everybody get their preliminary budgets turned in to you?
Tyler, since we have basically two new employees, temporary seasonal part-time.
Let me know if it's one of my.
And that's gonna be determined partially by load and partially by the great management of our committee.
Yes.
Our, our very able committee members.
Our disabled member, you said?
I was trying to get a rise out of the other guy wearing my shirt.
He's totally ignoring this side of the table.
Thank you, guys. What, how do we, do we have them come in for?
Well, they need to formally accept. And then they can go through the onboarding process, whatever it is, which is in, thank you, Bones.
Great.
You only need to schedule an appointment. What Sarah did do that?
Yeah. It won't take her long with her temporary part-time.
Seasonal.
Yeah.
Gotta get all that in.
Get that seasonal.
You gotta, you gotta put on an application every year, you gotta apply every year.
Yep. And then once we get that, if they're doing a good job, and we get somebody else wants to apply, you know, I always go by past experience and seniority, that's how I, that might not be the case.
All logging their hours to get paid?
To get paid, yeah.
Hopefully, this thing's a revenue-neutral operation, and you can have, if somebody else applies, you can hire them too.
Might have the inland port have enough money by then they could.
One of them, one of them by his own mission says, I don't know how long I can do this.
Yeah.
Having inland port fund a prairie dog.
So it might be a good idea to, like, having internship for somebody to transition into.
That would be the full-time guy at the weed office.
We're hoping.
That was, that's still on the burner. I told Todd that. Well, I guess they shared that they had sufficient budget to make him full-time, to hold on to him. Why don't you then, if he's such a good asset?
We did that.
Okay.
Yes.
We're gonna have a budget workshops coming up here soon.
So he is going to full-time?
Um, I would redirect that question.
Good question, that I was just lambasted with.
Yeah, I think I mentioned it last week, that I appreciated doing it last year, too. It really helped a little.
The budget process, are we gonna have some workshops in that regard coming up?
Yeah, I'll get, we just got everybody's stuff in and got it entered. At least two of the systems, I think we got one more system to go with that new budget. But, um, yes, we will, I will get you a calendar, hopefully.
Okay, good.
You know, back in the dark ages, believe it or not, we actually did a budget before the end, remember? Early, instead of doing it in August or whenever we do it now. That's, you know, because we're not even in our last fiscal year, we're in our current fiscal year without a budget, so. Just to let you know, back in the dark ages, things like that actually happened.
Can we go back to that? I thought it was really odd last year that we're already spending this year's money and we haven't even rep.
Yeah.
It's government.
We haven't approved anything yet.
It's government, it is supposed to make sense.
Joe's been here a few more years, so.
I guess.
Like, he says, back in the dark ages.
Um, how much should we budget revenue then for the, to offset this federal budget?
Don't know.
Well, you should figure some revenue then, no?
Take the budget that you have.
Two million dollars.
We would expect you to give some back.
I don't know.
I mean, forty-five percent, I mean, we wanna estimate.
I'd, I'd say figure forty-five.
Forty-five?
Fifty percent, because, again, if you're not, if you're not generating, you're not out working. So you're, you're either in the field making money, or you're not gonna be working.
We'll have to do a full, full setup, a separate line item.
Well, you mean hour-wise, not total budget-wise. Because budget-wise, we're still gonna have fixed costs of.
Right, you're gonna have startup expense.
Building, so you can do that on hourly-wise, but, but it's gonna be heavy this year because you're still gonna have, took up some startup costs, so.
Equipment.
I, I'd say twenty-five percent this first year, and then, then we have a litmus test to look back on.
That's fair enough.
In subsequent years. Do you figure what, fifty percent of that budget is gonna be the startup, the fixed costs?
Oh, yeah. I don't know.
What, what's the weed district do now? Do you know?
As far as.
Recapture?
Uh, I, sixty, over sixty thousand last year.
I mean, percentage-wise.
I don't know the percentage, I, but I can find out easy.
Well, we had it, we had it up to like thirty-eight percent of total budget recapture. I've talked to Todd about that a few times, but, and I don't even know what their fee structure is anymore, do you?
Uh, I have all the documents, I can't spew it out, but.
I know, we took a big jump, you know? And they said, oh, no, people won't do it, and they did it anyway. I mean, we didn't lose any business. I mean, we didn't lose any business.
The conversations I've participated in, it usually paid for all of the product and the fuel, but not the man-hours. Or the, or the building, utilities and whatnot. They also spend a lot of time spraying, you know, county property that they don't get any comp for, so.
Well, we, it sounds like we might need to get Naco and the county board to provide a little, kind of a bully pulpit for them to get some participation from the state and, uh, school lands. I think that level of cooperation has apparently gone by the wayside. Getting calls from the state right away, and Todd says, "They're not, they don't cooperate."
No. Yeah, he had that conversation with his board, too.
There's a, there used to be, and I can't find the right appropriate name in the directory in Lincoln, but there used to be a guy, and he's long gone now, I'm sure he's retired. Name was Richard, Richard Gray. That was his job.
Was this school lands?
No, he's from the Department of Roads. He was with the Department, his job, well, I chaired the initial hay and forage, certified hay and forage committee for the State Association, and he, he came on, one hundred percent on board to insisting on certified hay for all roadside projects throughout the state. Without his cooperation, we'd never got it done, so, wouldn't have any teeth to it. But now Todd says they don't even wanna talk to him about, they don't want him spraying, and they don't, apparently don't have the villagers spraying. I said, "You know, the statute says owns or controls, so that's, they have an obligation. They can't just shrug their shoulders."
Hey, Kim, what was, what was Neil's name that used to be with the state weeds?
He's from Mount Creek.
Yes.
He used to be a banker. He's gone now, passed away, what was his last name?
Good guy.
Almost had it. But I think Mitch Coffin's still in charge of the weed division down in the state. He was started out as a superintendent, and then he went to work as a region, or a district inspector, and then they gave him the director's job. There's gotta be some people down there to help provide some leverage. We're just gonna have to find out who, who's starting to ring. Tom Neil, not Neil, Tom Neil.
Yes.
Tom Neil.
Yeah.
What happened to your fancy coffee graph?
Well, it's still in his office, I just came in with this this morning.
Baltimore vodka?
So, how's my, so we've already, because this is already the, and the publisher. This was our, we've already paid nineteen to you. So, this, does this pay from him?
He would put a bigger graph in his cup holder on his coaster, he wouldn't have to have to buy his drink.
Okay, we did, we did agree to those, okay. All right, thank you. I'm gonna snap a picture of that, so I don't think.
You wanna drive your big diesel truck out there?
I don't want to, but I'm holding my Beamer, so.
You did? Have you had to replace the wipers on your Beamer? How long? So, my son, the banker, bought a Beamer, and next thing I know, he traded it off, and it's a nice little car, a little four-door.
He's supposed to be submitting.
He goes, "You can't just buy the wiper blade and buy the whole thing, and you gotta go through a BMW dealer." So, he got rid of it. He didn't have his real on.
Okay, I believe this is the end of the claims. Anything else come before the board? Becky's saying no. Tyler, you have anything?
I'm sir.
Tammy?
Are we laying up our thing to Sydney? Is he doing that?
Have some fun. Are we just gonna go out there?
Tyler, you gonna go up to Sydney with us to look at Towers, or do you want Kim and I?
Do I have to?
I guess it's, I guess it's you and I are going up.
Oh, yeah, I'll hear you.
I don't vote, so I don't know that I.
I don't know, I don't know that he needs to go if he doesn't want to.
I would like to know when you guys are going, because I think I'm gonna go also. I've been invited by the mayor of Sydney.
Have you?
He's a, he's a longtime coworker and friend, and so.
This, this one?
You know.
That's the one, she seems to be the one in charge, so.
Should I do it in the car?
Yeah, let's, um.
Do you wanna go?
Let's look about schedules.
I can give you. Okay.
Bye.
Try in the week. No, no, I gotta get, I gotta get next week down the road.
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I don't even, yeah, that's all I can say.
Not quite. Okay, I could do the ninth, I could do anywhere on the fourth, in the week of the fourteenth, that's his point. Next week gets a little busy for me, other than Wednesday.
Wednesday, the ninth?
I could do that.
Let me give her a call, and we'll set up a time, and I'll get over.
Are you going to, uh, I think, oh, the bank, it's the April, the banquet's the.
Okay, so it is twelve fifteen, no other business to come before the board, we shall.